So we will move on to information and proposals, non-action items. We will start with reports and information from school sources. We have three members here, or three meeting members here for public comment. Board policy two oh three states that individuals wishing to address the board directly during meeting may write in request prior to school meeting. And the board chair has discretion to determine if the one public comments will be placed on the agenda. So as a reminder, these are statements to the board as a whole. There will not be discussion with individual board members. And each speaker will have three minutes. When that time is up, this statement will be done. So we will start with Blanca Matias.
Good afternoon. Hi, my name is Blanca Matias. I am an immigrant from Mexico. I am a first grade teacher at RDLS. My children come here to Richfield. One goes to the STEM school and one goes to the middle school. I would like to say a few words on behalf of Senior Junowski. I have known Senior Junowski for thirteen years. He was my principal at St. Paul Public Schools when I was an educational assistant outreach worker. Senior Junowski encouraged me to go back to school to become a classroom teacher. He has always been respectful, appropriate, and a good leader. In St. Paul, his staff were very vocal and supported many causes. He always supported his staff in their causes as well. Mr. Junowski recruited me to come to Richfield Public Schools. I was not able to get a teaching job in any other districts because I didn't have a license. I worked for the last two years on a variance license. And with the support of Senior Junowski and the staff at RDLS and the staff members of the school board, I received the help I needed to pass the test to become a licensed teacher. I am happy to say that now I passed the test in the spring. With the value in Richfield, my teaching position was cut. Senior Junowski and the RDLS staff hired me back as a full-time teacher in the new pre-K program. I am thankful to be able to stay in a rich community school. I would also like to add that I have seen Senior Junowski with my own children and the children at Lingwood Monroe Arts Class in St. Paul and here at Richfield. He works hard to make sure that all students have a quality education. I bring my own children here in Richfield because I know that they are getting a great education and because of Senior Junowski's leadership. Thank you for your time. Gracias.
Thank you. Next, we have our round room.
I want to recognize the leadership vision and ambition of our superintendent, Steve Unowski. He fills me with energy when I listen to him and I sense how important it is to him for all students to achieve. He also encouraged parents, his team, and staff to inspire, empower, and excel each individual. I truly feel that he is doing as much he can to support us in this. In the end, it is what we all want for our students, our children, who are our future.
My name is Veronica Velazquez Barron, RDLS PTSO Vice President, former president of Richfield Latino Family Association. My family, Amin Abdalwahid, Egyptian accountant. Veronica Velazquez Barron, Mexican psychologist. We have no experience with the American educational system. We are all learning here through our kids. My husband, my kids. Safinesh Abdalwahid, RDLS 4th grader. Nurjahan Abdalwahid, 2nd grader. Asmahan Abdalwahid, kindergarten. Amir Abdalwahid, pre-K candidate. Ramin Abdalwahid, candidate of RDLS. And my unborn baby, future candidate of RDLS. My family. My family's positive experience in our District 280. Total acceptance in our unique Mexico-Egyptian situation. Respect and acceptance in our religion, Islam. We have been academically supported in many areas, like English as a third language, math, reading, all of those, et cetera. We have not experienced any form of racism. We have not experienced any form of Islamophobia. We have not been targeted because our race, color, or religion. Equity support from our District 280 and leadership. District leadership always present in monthly Richfield Latino Family Association meetings. District co-sponsored various events to engage and support Latino parents. Regular meetings to discuss the success and needs of our Latino families and students in the district. Parent education for all parents. District values the parents' voices through Voices United to support parents in understanding the school system and how to support their students. Richfield Latino Family Association team. We have a picture right there. Hopefully, you are able to see it. And we say in Spanish, juntos conseguimos. Coming up, just a few more pictures to show you. And with all my honor to Ms. Martha. She's one of the reasons she doesn't know why I enrolled my kids to RDLS. My three kids, formerly RDLS. Logros para todos. That's what we see through his eyes. That's what we feel, the support to every single family, every culture. And there are more pictures for me to show you how much I thank you for his leadership. Thank you very much.
Next, we have Tanika Carr. So Tanika was unable to make it. So we will move on to the superintendent update and Mr. Junowski.
So ETSIS is the Alternative Delivery of Specialized Services. So we have had statewide grant funding for the past two years. We've been very pleased to be provided ETSIS supports in both reading and math. It provides intervention for our students, looking to close the achievement gap and make sure they're reading by 3rd grade, also at all of grade levels in all of our schools. We provide reading, math intervention, and supports to all of our students. In the middle school, it's tiered classes that support students in reading and math acceleration. And within the high school, we are looking at moving students forward in reading and math to allow them to participate in college credit-bearing classes and also to close the gap to make it to grade level. Proud to share that we have received, and we made a $995,000 request of the state, but $961,000 was approved, bringing us to nearly $3 million that we've received from the state of Minnesota in the past three years in regard to ETSIS. And ETSIS funding our students to, again, close the achievement gap. And so we're very pleased with our support from the state. And this will continue for fiscal year 2018. And then also, as long as the state continues to fund the ETSIS program, that nearly $1 million will continue on for one more year, bringing us close to $4 million over the four-year span. Any questions from board members in regard to ETSIS?
Steve, I have a question. ETSIS started originally, I believe, at the middle school. Was that three years ago, four years ago?
I believe it was approximately four or five, five years ago at the middle school. And innovative set of staff had written the ETSIS grant. We then saw the innovative work that they were doing at the middle school, decided to make that a district-wide program. At just the middle school, we were approximately able to receive around $250,000. But by expanding it to a district-wide program, we came close to $1 million last year, next year, and the year after.
And this is an annual submission for the ETSIS grant?
Biannual. So when the legislature continues on in the budget with regard to ETSIS, those funds would be continuing. And so if you'll notice in the top of the letter, it basically says approved for fiscal year 1718 and 1819, pending, of course, legislative funding continuing for the program. All right, so I am going to wrap that up and move on to our QComp peer review team. And so one of the innovative methods by which we as a district partner with our teachers and our Ed Richfield Teachers Union is in regard to QComp and peer review. And so we have our district person, Dr. Joey Page, who will be presenting the district's portion of the peer review team. And then also Jonathan Hire and the peer review team of Ed Richfield members who are here to share some of the good work that they've been doing in regard to professional development, teacher evaluation, and supports and coaching for teachers. So with that, Jonathan, Melanie Lawrence Smith, and Lori Olson, and Joel Miltier.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I just wanted to clarify a little bit, too, that we are the steering committee for QComp. And so Melanie is the lead peer reviewer. She's the peer reviewer representative on the steering committee. And then Lori and I are teacher members. And then Joel and Joey are admin members of the steering committee. And we just want to thank you for the opportunity to share with you an update on the QComp program. We will be sharing with you areas about our Learning Academy, also our evaluations and observations that we conduct for all the staff, professional learning community, including our PLCs that each school has, and also our mentoring program, and ending up with some student achievement data and goals data that we collect throughout the year.
All right, we'll start with Learning Academy. So Learning Academy is a group of professional development courses offered through QComp. And what we've been doing is we've been advertising it throughout the year to recruit facilitators and also encourage teachers to participate. This year, we offered 16 courses and 146 teachers attended. Feedback from participants was overwhelmingly positive. One thing that stood out from the data is that 91% of Learning Academy participants agreed or strongly agreed that their course positively impacted classroom instruction. The other piece with reviewing teachers or observing teachers is making sure the observers are consistent. So what we did as a team is we really studied Danielson evaluation tool very closely. We also increased conversations around Danielson in our PLCs. We looked at videos together. We went into classrooms, did observations, determined ratings together. And then we really use PLC to focus on component interpretation. We also surveyed the teachers across the district, and 100% of teachers completed the observation process. 129 teachers responded to the QComp survey. 57% of teachers agreed or strongly agreed that the peer review process supported their development. 56% of teachers agreed or strongly agreed that the peer review process impacted their classroom instruction. And 53% of teachers are generally satisfied with all the components of QComp.
Does it do advance here? Okay. So through that process, we learned several things from our staff and our teachers, and things that we think we need to come back with and share more information with the teachers, things such as understanding why evaluations and observations are necessary, knowing the purpose of the observations and evaluations, gaining a deeper understanding of instruction at each level, looking for the resources to help support them in their instruction and their professional growth, and then emphasizing the three types of feedback during the observation process. In 2016 and 17, every school had time to set aside for PLC meetings, once per week for 60 minutes. During these meetings, teachers would focus on and look at student data, discuss teaching around standards, common formative assessments, work towards the professional learning communities and professional growth plans, goals, discuss best practices, shared and planned strategies and interventions, and collaborated to tailor instruction in order to meet the needs of all Richfield students.
So part of the QComp program is to have a mentoring program. So we have new teachers that are new to career or mid-career, professionals that come into the district. And so Richfield Public Schools has a mentoring program. This year, we served 42 teachers that were mentored. We had three mentor meetings and workshops were held throughout the year. One of the things that we started this year and then moving forward is develop a needs assessment with myself and Dr. Roby for mentors and mentees as they come into the system as far as we're supporting them and what their needs are, both from a mentoring relationship as the mentor and the mentee. And we want to continue to work on recruiting and training our veteran teachers and encouraging them to become mentors in our program.
Our QComp program also collects some data on our PLC goals and goals achievement, as well as our school improvement plan goals and how those goals were achieved. And we have data from 2015, I mean, 1415 and 1516. Each PLC will come up with a goal at the beginning of the year, and they'll work towards that. They'll use the data that they collected at the beginning of the year and then the data at the end of the year to see if they've reached those goals, and they work collaboratively throughout the year. So our PLC goal achievement data, 80% in 2015 and 78% in 2016. And our school improvement plan goal achievement, 35% in 2015 and 56% in 2016. As we look forward to this year's data, we will be collecting that, and we're in the process of that as well. A lot of the MCA data will be embargoed until August. And so as we look through the data, we'll come up and have the report for you next year on this year's data. Then as we move forward as well throughout the summer, we'll be talking with our group as well as looking at the survey that we sent out to teachers and looking for ways that we want to make revisions and changes to the plan. And those need to be submitted to MDE by August 31st. And we will be sending you, seeking your approval and education materials approval before any of those changes are submitted. And with that, we are concluding our presentation, but we'd like to open it up for questions if you have any.
I'm sure you have a question. If we can go to the teacher support, the QComp teacher data. Help me to put some context around the numbers that you're presenting and how we interpret those numbers, what we would learn from those numbers for any future work.
Okay. And Mr. Tenzing, are you referring to the numbers that are in the 50s?
Correct.
Okay. So 50% of teachers agree or strongly agree that the peer review process supported their development. So that would tell us that most of the teachers generally see the peer review process as something that is helping them improve their instruction and would further student achievement moving forward. This next one, 56% of teachers agree or strongly agree that the peer review process impacted their classroom instruction. Again, it's trusting the process and knowing that going through the peer review process has a positive influence on instruction. And then the ultimate result is student success or student achievement. The last number, 53% of teachers are generally satisfied with QComp. I wonder if maybe Jonathan can take that one.
Well, I'll go to the recommendations page that we, we really want to look at these recommendations, and we want to work throughout the summer and next school year to help all of our teachers understand a little bit more deeply about how the evaluation and observation process can help them in their teaching and instruction. And that's really what we're all about, is helping people reflect on their, us teachers reflect on our instructions and growing competency in all of us so that we can affect positive change in our student achievement. So we've talked as a group of how can we do that? How can we better help teachers understand how this process can help in those areas?
You're saying that, you mean that, you think that more teachers would feel that the process in student development, they understood? Why? I'd like to know about the comments of the other 40% of teachers who, you know, is it that they didn't feel supported in their development, that they didn't feel that they actually made an improvement? And are those results tied to the recommendations? Is that why those are there going forward?
Right. So we do feel that maybe a little bit. We need to make some better understanding of what the different ratings may mean. And different ratings as far as what the peer reviewers give, as far as ratings go. And the understanding about what those mean, and as well as the process, like we said, that we're trying to help everybody gain competency in their instruction so that we can further the achievement of all the students. So the survey did have room for some comments, so those are reflected in what we're trying to move forward with.
Two questions. Thanks, Tim. The first is whether you could just give us a little bit of a sample of the types of courses that are offered through the Learning Academy. I remember seeing the list in the fall at the staff orientation, which was right in this room. But I think it'd be helpful to just be reminded of the different types of things that are offered through that. And then the second question, which I can repeat after even the first one, if you want me to. I was familiar long, long ago with the Danielson framework, but it's been a long time. And so if you can speak to the, just at a high level, so people hear, the types of things that are being evaluated and really studied within the classroom in the Danielson model to get a sense of the type of holistic experience that we hope our teachers are having with us.
Okay. So absolutely. What I can do is I can pull together our brochure for Learning Academy so that you can see all the courses that were offered this year. I think you'll be pretty impressed. It was really well-rounded, and some courses that supported elementary and secondary teachers. In terms of Danielson, the evaluation tool is quite rigorous. First domain is domain one, and that covers planning. Are we designing lessons that support student learning and that are relevant to students and keep them engaged? The second domain is domain two. It's around the classroom environment. Are we building relationships with students? Are we, you know, respecting them as learners? Domain three covers instruction, and that really focuses on student engagement. And are we, as we're delivering an instruction, are we engaging students? And then domain four is professionalism. Are we using data to really have conversations with our colleagues in order to transform our instruction and reflect as educators?
Thank you. That was very helpful.
Thanks.
I am certified in that as an observer, so I am very delighted to tell you.
I also have a couple of questions, if that's all right. The Learning Academy, we have about 46% participating and overwhelmingly liking it. So how do we go about getting the other 54% to participate and be attracted to what is seen as a very positive experience? But also, we have about 53% overall who seem to like QComp. So is it really the same people? And is it just the same people who really like the learning and the collaborative and the peer review thing? And how do we expand that circle? It's got to be a short straw over there somewhere.
I think you're right. We've got 146 teachers that participated this year in Learning Academy. We've been trying to figure that out in our conversations for the last few years as to why more people may not, you know, choose to go to a Learning Academy. A lot of them are offered after school or maybe, you know, on a weekend. So there may be barriers as far as that goes. So we need to be creative to figure out ways to invite more people to join. But it's great to see that 91% overwhelmingly think that it's good for their instruction. As far as the survey goes, a little bit over a third of the staff reported back on the survey. So, you know, that we have to take those numbers with a grain of salt as well, and to see, maybe we can encourage more people to fill out the survey and we get a better picture of that as well. But we don't know if they're the same people on that. It was two different surveys, is that correct? Yeah.
And one more thing that I can think of that we did at the very beginning of QComp that we probably should do again is sending a survey to staff and asking them, again, about topics they would like to learn about. I think that would be a way for the facilitators to know which courses to design, and then it would get the participants excited about possible courses that would be coming up in the future.
And possibly you could ask what, you know, what the timing might be better for them. So if you think possibly when the courses are offered might be one of the barriers, you could ask when would work better for different teachers.
Absolutely. That's a great point.
One of the things we've also done, you know, one of our more popular Learning Academies has been Innocent Classroom. We do have one school that's looking to do it as a school-wide initiative, where the principal will be trading one of the after-school hours of teachers to do two hours of PD to make that work, to do a larger rollout of Innocent Classroom. So we're also working with the QComp team to find creative ways within the current structure of our workday of our staff to allow some of the professional development opportunities, whether they're within QComp or whether they're external to QComp, to happen that way. And then one more thing, a comment more than a question. I think we also need to very much acknowledge the work of our teacher leaders. Our steering committee helps guide a lot of that work. And then our peer reviewers go in, and it's a very challenging job, obviously, to be giving sometimes difficult, sometimes not difficult feedback to colleagues. And so our QComp peer reviewers spend approximately three years on the peer review team prior to going back to the classroom. And so they are being brave leaders of our organization, really working to improve instruction for all of our students. And so I want to thank them for all of their work. And also acknowledge, obviously, that they have a significant transition next year because our three-year lead, who's standing in front of us, Melanie Lawrence Smith, will be transitioning from that role into the assistant principal at staff. And so they will be looking for a transition within their team also. And so I want to thank them for their work and congratulate Ms. Lawrence Smith.
So.
Yes, thank you.
If you have one follow-up question? If I could ask a follow-up? I'm sorry. It was a little bit, a little bit out of cases here. Follow-up question is on the, on the observation, the teacher goals. And I, you know, I'm hearing the answer that we received, and I think that what I'm hearing from you is that you're putting efforts in place to modify process in order to see those numbers come up. I also have a question on the student achievement goals. And it sounds like the student achievement goal is set by each individual PLC, so it's appropriate to their kind of domain, their grade level, their milieu, right? Am I getting that correct?
Yes. Each PLC group will review their data at the beginning of the year. Uh, each PLC group will, um, review their data at the beginning of the year, and then, uh, they, um, make their PLC goal, which is then, um, reviewed by their administrator and, um, QCOM's members at each school.
Got it. So, I guess what I'm curious about is, um, when it comes to setting these student achievement goals, um, and this may be something that I just need education on, um, so I, it, when you're setting that student achievement goal, you're looking at your baseline of, are you looking at a base, achievement baseline for how your students are coming into that year?
Right.
Is there any year-over-year work that we're doing? To see sort of?
So, the, the school improvement plan goals are, are the ones that most teachers will probably base their PLC goal on. And the school improvement, uh, goals are mostly given to us by, by the district or the state in, in some cases. Um, and then the PLC goals may, um, deviate from there depending on what their stu, their, their particular students are, the particular class that they want to focus on for that year. Um, so the, the school improvement plan or plan goals are probably better year to year.
Can I, is it fair to say that it's similar to many others?
I would think so.
So, in, in the case that is, so when you're doing the, so the PLC is generally tied to the standards that you're going to be teaching right now so that you don't double up on the requ, the requirements that you're asking of teachers? So that the, the work is really meaningful, right, to the next unit? And then it's a, uh, planning collaboration? So, when you tie the PLC goal, is let's say a goal about math proficiency at a level? So, you do a baseline test, you teach, you talk about backwards planning assessments and the teaching, and then you reevaluate? And that's what I, um, percent of in your thinking?
So, each PLC makes a goal that will last for the whole year. But then they have smaller goals, like the one that you're, uh, describing, that they would do unit by unit, uh, looking at data maybe in a six to eight-week cycle. And then planning, um, their instruction based on the, the data that they, they get from those, um, we call, uh, formative assessments that we, that we give. And then, um, all those small goals would hopefully, um, be growing towards the PLC year-long goal, so.
Got it. So, I, I think that what I'm hearing then is that when, when it comes at least to the PLC goals, we're, we're setting these goals against what one might consider sort of an absolute benchmark, whether that be the benchmark of the state standards or some other absolute benchmark for achievement.
Typically, their standardized tests could be the MCA or, or maybe the map test that teachers have, have the data for.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. That helps. Thank you. Quick run. Thank you.
All right. So, with that, we're going to transition to update from Tia Clayson, um, in regard to talent development and academics, um, advanced academics, um, providing an update, um, that we provided this time of year in regard to gifted services and enrollment in college-bearing, uh, college credit-bearing classes.
Good evening, Chair Merel, members of the board, Superintendent Unowski. I'm here to provide a brief update on talent development and advanced academics, especially as they relate to the high school and elementary school this year. So, we focused our work, all of our work is focused under our strategic plan. I brought out, um, the strategy one because that is really the basis of so much of our work, um, providing multiple supported college and career pathways for high school students and expanding preparation for and access to college-level coursework. The first thing that I want to talk about are the seminar courses. As you know, we're going to a seven-period day, and we created many new courses at the high school. One of the things that we focused on specifically was creating what we call seminar courses to support students to actually succeed in rigorous coursework, including, um, some of our college, uh, our college courses in the high school. So, a seminar task force was created, um, to do this work. It was, um, uh, the task force included, um, teachers, it included building administration, it included district-level staff. The, um, we wanted to make sure that the courses were aligning, aligning to the content area and also to each other, so that the, the seminar courses had, um, a general framework so students would, if, you know, and, and teachers would have that commonality within, um, the seminar courses themselves. The common, common expectations for the courses, the teachers were identified during the task force meetings and communicated out to staff, at staff meetings and department meetings. Each seminar teacher was required to come to a one-hour training session, um, to get some ideas on, um, common unit planning templates and lesson planning templates. And, um, of course, the courses are completely aligned to their core courses, including a scope and sequence. There were some non-negotiables involved, um, in the creation of our seminar courses. Um, one of the things is that a seminar course is not a study hall, that it actually is intentional instruction, um, for support for our students. It is not a remedial course. Again, it is a scaffolded support course to help students succeed in, um, in more rigorous coursework. It includes a strong focus on content vocabulary and general academic vocabulary, um, that will cross content areas, and that it will provide scaffolding in the skills needed for success in the core course. For instance, um, analysis of a primary source document. New college-level courses offered for school year seventeen, eighteen. Here are a list of the four, um, new college courses this year. One of them is a course that is being brought back to Richfield, um, the CIS Introduction to Literature, and CIS stands for College in the Schools through the University of Minnesota. Current college-level courses with a new seminar support course. Um, I've provided a list for you of those seminar courses that are, are being written by our teachers right now. The asterisk, there's an asterisk, uh, after two of the courses, AP Bio and CIS Physiology and Physiology Seminar. Those courses are going to be caught, taught, caught, caught, sorry, it's been a long day. Taught in tandem, um, by the same instructor during that same time period. So, our science teachers, um, came together and said that this was a feasible way to, um, construct that seminar course for those two courses. We're not thinking of just next year, we're thinking of well beyond next year, um, including, um, the, um, as, the work as it aligns to our dual-language immersion program at the high school. So, our AP Spanish literature, especially for dual-language, um, in, uh, dual-language immersion students, and the possibility of CIS macroeconomics. So, our enrollment in rigorous courses, I've provided a three-year trend, and this three-year trend is actually including the, um, the enrollment for this coming school year, what students have actually registered for, for this coming school year. The numbers are not exclusive, okay? So, for instance, a student may be counted more than once depending on their schedule. They could be taking two AP courses. They could be taking an AP course and a CIS course. So, you've got students who have, um, quite a load, um, and so, I, I wanted to make sure that you understood that reflection.
Before you move on, I just want to make a comment on that particular slide.
Mm-hmm.
Because we have worked with this data pretty exclusively. Um, it's important to note that the number of Caucasian students, while they're decreasing by percentage, they've actually stayed the same. Um, the same number of students have been taking advanced college classes, or the same number of Caucasian students over the past three years, but the number of students of color have seen the large increase. I believe it was about a hundred and eighty more seats have been filled by students of color. Um, and then simultaneously, and this was also outlined in the Star Tribune in regard to our article in regard to Principal Daniels, um, at the same time, our graduation rate has jumped and our course pass rate has jumped, um, and our math and our reading test scores have jumped at the high schools. So, it's not just that we are putting, uh, more students into advanced coursework, um, but more students are achieving at grade level and at standard, um, more students are passing these classes, and more students are graduating on top.
And more students are taking more advanced classes. So, y- y- you know, you have more students taking advanced class, and you have more students taking more than one advanced class. So, it's kind of just the entire pool is, 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 is rising and getting bigger. Um, I do want to say that this, these numbers reflect a marked increase in our students of, um, of, you know, our African-American students and our Hispanic-Latino students. We simply don't have a large enough population of Asian students for such a jump in our students of color. If you take a look from, you know, two years ago to now, that's an eighteen percentage-point jump or increase in students of color taking advanced courses. And that is very reflective of, um, it's, it's becoming much more reflective of our population in general. At the elementary, uh, uh, level, um, we will provide challenging, relevant, and engaging educational opportunities for all students that will increase learning and providing a rigorous, standards-based learning environment. That's part of our strategic plan, and again, this is the focus of our work. So, our spring identification update, we identified ninety-one newly identified, um, elementary students coming into grades three, four, and five, which is always super exciting. And again, here is the trend for our elementary students. Um, again, uh, we are identifying more students. We are using multiple data points to identify students. We are digging deep into the multiple data points to identify students. We are understanding that our students, you know, come from, um, you know, uh, that, that, you know, English might not be their first language, it might not be their second language, and we have to take all of those things into account. We have students who have, um, identified IEPs for many various reasons. All of that needs to be taken into account when we take a look at data. Data is not a number, data is a student's name. So, if you take a look at this, uh, in one year, we have, in two years, I should say, we have basically reversed the percentages. Over the course of three years, we have increased identification of students of color by seventeen percent. Again, I'll say that this is a marked increase in the number of African-American and Latino-Hispanic students who are being identific, identified for services in either math or reading or So, we know, um, again, this was just a brief update, the middle school program, um, we, we anticipate that we will be taking a look at middle school in the future as we see how the seven-period day is progressing so that we can create that intentional alignment between middle school and high school, and then also take a look at how our elementary and our middle school is aligned. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
I have a number of questions. I think, one, you probably can't answer at the moment, but I would appreciate, um, you mentioned that specifically the high school, um, students may be counted multiple times in that data. I would like to be able to see each student counted only once, um, and the extent to which that may shift these numbers because I do think that that is a, a really important picture for us to have. My second question, you, you addressed somewhat, and again, it's maybe just a request for more, more data to follow up, um, but I would like to see the data disaggregated by, um, student race and to be able to see how that compares to our overall student population just so we can really be looking at those numbers. And then the third question, I think you probably can actually answer in this moment. Um, this is going to be bad. Um, so, at the high school level, uh, a concern that I have heard is that courses might just be being renamed so that they count as rigorous courses even though the substance of them perhaps has not changed. Can you speak to that?
Uh, yeah. Well, I can, I can definitely, um, I can definitely speak to all of the work that we've done for the past two years at the high school. So, creating, uh, an aligned scope and sequence, I'll just take English Language Arts because it's, it, it was the work that I've done the longest at the high school. Um, the teachers, when, when we built the, their scope, when the teachers built their units to go with the scope and sequence, one of the, one of the things that we did all year long when we got together for curriculum writing was to actually go in and take a look at how our honors courses and how our general education courses differed in some of the, the rigor of the, of, um, not only instruction, but of the learning of the student, of the text levels of, of the texts that they were using. Um, that was all work that has been extremely, um, how do I want to put it? We, we've had a, a pinpoint focus on, on that as far as honors courses go, and I'm, I'll just speak to honors courses there. As far as CIS and AP courses, that's dictated by the University of Minnesota and the, and the College Board. And so, those, those courses, um, have a very strict, um, uh, framework that they have to adhere to. Teachers need to be trained, and, um, and, and in the case of, uh, an AP course, there's an exam at the end of the year that students take. Um, so, that's, that's actually pretty well-scripted by those two entities. And as far as the, the, um, numbers go, I will certainly get those to you.
Thank you.
So, I also wanted to point out, so from what I understand, um, some of the increase in the number of students taking these courses is due to a change in how, how it's offered, where it used to be that we offered a certain number of courses at these advanced levels, and then you would apply and you would get in.
Yes.
And from what I understand now, the courses that are, um, are offered are based on the number of students that actually request to be in the class.
Correct.
So, we are shifting it to where the students are, the students' wishes and, and, and interest in achieving higher levels are what are driving the classes that we are offering.
Correct. So, we removed the application process. We turned it into self-select. However, we turned it into self-select with a lot of support and encouragement from our staff, from our guidance counselors, um, and, and informing families of the opportunities for their students and what, and what those decisions can mean for the future of our kids. So, it's not just here, kids, you know, go pick your classes. It is with a lot of support from the staff at Richfield High School. Thanks.
So, oh, so, so, Tia, I'm sorry. I seem to be the latecomer on the questions, yeah.
Dr. Tensing, you're really good at this.
Sorry about that. So, I, one thing I want to, I want to just reflect on that, you know, understanding that this work did not happen overnight and that this is the result of two to three years of very intentional work and, and to recognize that that's very hard work on your part and the part of, you know, many, many throughout the district, and thank you for that. Um, the second question has to do with, uh, sort of goals. Um, and, and maybe this is a very difficult question to answer, uh, but it's, it's basically the question of when we know that we have, uh, sort of reached our, our steady state where, where we're doing right by all of our kids. Um, you know, with the, with the, uh, hypothesis being that we knew that there was work to be done, um, and that there may still be work to be done.
Um, and so, in, I'm, I'm just deciding whether or not I speak from my head or my heart first. Um, I'm going to speak from my heart first. Um, I know that our, so, when I was a teacher, my job was basically to get my kids not to need me anymore, and I would tell them that all the time, that, that's my job. Um, but I, but my job was also to provide the education that was commensurate to, um, to, a, a challenge for every single one of my students. So, I know nirvana comes when we are providing, um, a challenging experience throughout the entire day for every single one of our students, um, no matter what their talents or their, whatever gifts that they have. And that is not just in reading or in math. It's in science, it's in social studies, it's in music, it's in leadership. And so, that's my heart speaking. Um, my head is speaking when I know that these numbers are, 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 match the, the populate, the, the demographics of our, of our community and our school district. And I will say that that, in general, is a struggle all over the United States of America. It's not, it's not exclusive to Richfield, it's not exclusive to Minnesota, but, um, it, it continues to, um, it continues to be the work. And, um, so I know that we've hit nirvana there, and, um, then we go on the road and we tell everybody else how to do it, um, when we are matching the demographics of our, of ours, of our, of our public schools.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. So, that summarizes the three components that are typical business. Um, at this time, I'm going to invite Craig Holgy and Peter Leatherman up, um, and we are going to begin a conversation around, um, possible referendum for the fall. Um, we have, um, reported multiple times about a capital facility study. Um, and so, if you recall, um, we did a small operational levy renewal a couple of years ago, and we chose not to do a survey because we weren't going to ask anything beyond, or significantly beyond renewal. However, um, with our current situation in regard to possibility of a bond referendum, um, possibility of an operational referendum, um, we thought at this point it was a great opportunity to bring in the experts. Um, and so, we contacted Morris Leatherman, and Peter Leatherman here, is here tonight to talk about, um, a survey that conducted of our constituents. And so, they do a phone survey, and so, I'm not going to give him much more introduction because I think he's going to talk about how many people, um, and he's going to just sort of introduce, um, how they know that they got a representative sample of our community, and then Mr. Leatherman's going to talk a little bit about some of the findings. Um, so with that.
Excellent. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Is this, okay, it is on. Just to remind everyone what we undertook for the district, we spoke with six hundred and twenty-five randomly selected members of the community. The survey was conducted, uh, between May tenth and May twenty-third. between May tenth and May twenty-third. The average responded took twenty minutes on the phone with us, but we did have fifteen percent on the phone for over forty-five minutes by their own choice. We consider those folks the historians of the district. They have a lot of information in addition to the questions that we asked that they want to share. And just to keep in mind that the results are projectable to within plus or minus four percent in ninety-five out of a hundred cases. When we look at the demographics and from the recent updated census on key factors, your homeownership versus renters, households with children, household composition over sixty-five, those sorts of factors, we really are within that plus or minus four percent on all those key factors, keeping in mind the census has the margin of error also. So, we feel we have a good representative sample demographically across the district, and also location-wise between the wards and then with the Dyna also. And everybody also wants to know about cell phones. Cell phones are included in the sample. We include cell phones, started including them back in two thousand nine in the mix. So, in this particular survey, thirty-four percent indicated they were cellphone-only households, sixteen percent were landline-only, and then the remainder had a combination of a landline and a cellphone together. So, I would ask, are there any questions on methodology at all and the demographics before I go into the results themselves?
You mentioned a number of different demographics, but I know when we were talking about going into the survey, we were told that it would be racially and ethnically, as well as language, reflective in terms of the survey?
Yes.
Did that hold true?
Absolutely, yes. And we have, we have foreign language speakers. We cover multiple languages when we call, especially within Minneapolis-St. Paul and the inner ring suburbs specifically, but even in outstate Minnesota. You know, in southern Minnesota, there's a high percentage of Spanish speakers that, and we have Spanish speakers on staff, absolutely. With that, the first portion of the survey is what I call an atmospherics test of the district. And what we're looking for are people's perceptions and feelings about the district, because as you go into a referendum election, at the end of the day, you want voters to think about what they're getting and how much it costs, and not bring additional baggage from past decisions, spending, all sorts of things. So, we go through the series of the upfront to look at the atmospherics in the district. And to get people to start thinking about the district, we ask them a couple of open-ended questions. What do they like most about the district and what the most serious issue facing the district is? And your folks in, in Richfield are focused on the academic quality here. If we look, and if you combine the excellent academics, the good academics, and the high test scores, you have almost a third of residents indicating that that's what they like most about the district. You have twenty percent indicating good teachers, staff-driven, and then the programming, the variety of programming, the breadth, the breadth of the curriculum itself at twenty percent also. But really, a clear hierarchy here that is the academic quality. Now, does this differ across the metro area? Each district is unique. Before I came here, I was in Anokahana presenting at five-thirty. Theirs, they pretty much tied all of them, twenty-six, 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 kind of the curriculum, the quality, and the staff, and the personnel. Some districts have a higher emphasis on curriculum. Yours, though specifically, your folks really are focused on the academic quality within the schools. Still, the teachers and the programming are important and create a second tier. Now, what do folks think is the most serious issue facing the district? This question is an open-ended, and what we consider on this chart is if one in four residents, if it hits twenty-five percent of folks indicating that something is a serious issue, we consider that's something that the district needs to be aware of. You don't have anything at the twenty-five percent level. The highest amount that you have is class sizes at sixteen percent. One in six residents indicating that's the most serious concern. Thirteen percent talk about poor spending. Eleven percent talk about the lack of funding, discipline, declining quality, drugs and alcohol, and scattered. Interestingly enough, if you go to the bottom, the nothings, those are the boosters. They do not see any problems in the district. And across the metro area right now, that average is about eight percent. So, you're three times higher on the mode of boosterism in the district than the typical school district in the metro area. If we look at the overall quality of education, how do residents rate it? Excellent, good, only fair or poor. You have twenty-six percent excellent, sixty-two percent good, so the perception of residents overall is eighty-eight percent, that the quality of education being provided is positive. We differentiate school districts on the excellent rating. So, the excellent rating, the average across the state right now is twenty percent. And so, you're above the average on that enthusiastic rating for the quality of education. When they think of the education compared to three years ago, do they think it's better, worse, or about the same? You have thirty-one percent that indicate over the past three years, they feel the quality of education has gotten better. Nine percent view it as worse. So, by about a three and a half to one margin, it tips in favor of perception over a three-year time period that there is improvement in the district. The average on that across the metro area right now is about two to one, in the, in moving in the right direction. There are those unfortunate districts that do have more people saying it's worse than better, but there's other issues there. But thirty-one percent then feel it's better, fifty-three percent say it's about the same, and only nine percent worse than three years ago. How does the district do in meeting the learning needs of students? Do they meet the learning needs of all students, most students, only some, or very few? Fifty-nine percent indicate that you meet the learning needs of all students in their perception. Very strong. Very few districts go over fifty percent threshold in meeting and having residents say that all learning needs are met. Now, amongst those that said most, only some, or very few, we followed up with a question and asked, whose learning needs do you feel are not being met? And that is in the upper right-hand corner. Twenty-seven percent, and that's twenty-seven percent of the thirty-four percent indicate struggling students. Average students at seventy, seventeen percent, diverse or ethnic, twelve percent, and gifted and talented at eleven percent. So, the perception is, if you combine the struggling and the, the average, it's not so much geared towards the gifted and talented that they're concerned about, but it is towards the struggling, the average student as a whole. But overall, the biggest takeaway, the fifty-nine percent saying that you're meeting the needs of all districts, is among the highest we have in the last eighteen months. Now, we went through a series of statements and asked for folks to agree or disagree. Do you spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? Sixty-four agree, twenty-six percent disagree. The threshold we consider for strong financial credibility on this question is fifty-five percent agreement. So, you'd do very well on that question. Do the residents think that the schools are a good value for the investment? Eighty-seven percent agree with that statement. Very strong. Do they see the connection that the quality of schools increases property values? Absolutely. Eight and ten see that connection. Are they satisfied with decision-making? Sixty-seven, twenty-seven. Twenty-seven percent disagreement, a little bit lower than the norm of about thirty percent in most school districts. Do they trust you to do what's right for the children? Eighty-two to thirteen, very strong comparatively. Excuse me. Do you do, do a good job of involving the community? Eighty percent indicate that they agree with that, eighteen percent disagree. The threshold across the metro over the last three years is seventy percent agreement, so ten points higher than we typically see. Are you honest about spending? Sixty-six agree, twenty-three percent disagree. Pairing that back with the previous question on the chart before with, do you spend taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently? I'll just, I'll flip back to that for a second. That was at sixty-four percent. This one at sixty-six percent. And we combine those two for a financial credibility factor in the district. And on both of those, it indicates with almost two-thirds agreement on both of those questions, you do have financial credibility in the minds of residents in comparison to where other districts are. And then finally, the first time we start talking about a referendum, and it's simply a theoretical question at this point, is, I would support a property tax increase to protect the investment in the schools. Sixty-three percent agree with that, twenty-five percent disagree, and thirteen percent indicate they need more information. So, it tells us then that the core opposition is twenty-five percent. They don't know if it's an operating levy or bond referendum, but they're not interested in the tax increase at this point in time. Job performance ratings? The school board and the superintendent administration, the ratings basically mirror each other. Sixty-six percent favorable to thirty percent negative on the board, sixty-eight, twenty-three on the administration. So, the governance and the administration part are seen together as a cohesive unit in the community as a whole. Principals and teachers, they go up, obviously. The closer you get to the, the students, the higher the ratings go up. Eighty-one to fourteen on principals and administrators. And the teachers and instructional staff lead the list in every district, and yours is no different. Ninety percent favorably rate the district, the district instructors. Only six percent disagree. And when I talk about that, sort of that fifteen percent that stayed on the phone with forty-five minutes with us, a lot of them were in that six percent instructional staff recalling teachers from years ago. Financial management then, and overall rating, sixty-one percent excellent and good, thirty-three percent only fair or poor. Almost a two-to-run ratio on this question, very strong comparatively. The average across the metro on this question is fifty percent positive to forty percent negative, with ten percent unsure. So, overall, in the minds of residents, the district does have strong fiscal credibility at this point in time. The property tax climate, and this is a trend, you, your results that we're gonna talk about as we get into the referendum mirror trends that we see in district after district. And the first trend that we've seen in district after district since last summer during the election season, and the legislative elections specifically, not the president, but the legislative election season, where the discussion on property taxes came up, and the surplus in that discussion. There is growing property tax hostility across the metro area right now. In Richfield School District, fifty percent think their taxes are either very high or somewhat high, forty percent about average. We would classify the district as a hostile tax climate, a borderline hostile tax climate. The threshold is fifty percent in that very high and somewhat high category, and you just reach that. Now, what do we consider a very hostile climate? The district I'd mentioned I just came from was at sixty percent very high and somewhat high. If we go out further west and south in the metro area, those districts approach seventy percent in the very high and somewhat high. So, it is a concern here in the Richfield School Districts, but not as big a concern as we've seen elsewhere at this point in time. Now, we follow up with folks and ask them, when you think about the school taxes, do you think those are high, or about average, or low? And we do that because we're trying to ascertain, our residents thinking that the impetus for the higher taxes is based, is to be put at the feet of the district. And that's not the case here. If you see, the total perception taxes of fifty percent goes down to forty percent on school taxes. So, their onus and concern on property tax in, in the district are focused at another entity of government. We can't ascertain which entity, you might wanna guess, but it's not at the district itself. We could tell it was at the district itself if it actually went up higher than their perception on taxes as a whole. So, that's the property tax environment that you're operating in this year, no different than any other district. The other change that we've seen, and we have a, we had a special session, was it four years ago, where there was all the argument about educational funding, and what that did is create confusion in everybody's minds. And when we'd ask the question, do you think the Richfield Public Schools are adequately funded, or any school district, it could be Boabik, it could be, you know, Worthington, you'd have forty-five percent say yes, forty-five percent say no, and ten percent would say, I have no idea. And you have this perfect split. Nobody knew the adequacy of funding. Over the past six months in the state, there has been now a change in people perceiving that school districts are adequately funded. No doubt with the session and the discussion of education. Now, this survey was conducted just, well, who can tell exactly when they ended, but predominantly before the legislature ended the session, but there was the discussion. And we see this, you know, this fifty-six to twenty-eight now. Some districts are at sixty-three percent. So, the, the environment is a concern on taxes, but also a perception that districts are adequately funded, a growing belief that districts are adequately funded. What are the perceptions of buildings and facilities in the district? Very positive as a whole. Fifty-nine percent rate them as excellent, twenty-eight percent good, only six percent only fair or poor. So, the overall perception is that the facilities in the district are excellent. The discussion then needs to turn to, how does it impact the quality of education? That's the key in the district. You know, there are those school districts out there that it's important to have nice buildings and facilities. This isn't one of them. It's important to have them for the quality of education itself, not just the sake to have a bright, shiny new building. So, the fifty-nine percent excellent is really a strong endorsement with the condition of the buildings as they are right now. Now, if they said good, only fair or poor, we followed up with them and asked what needs to be improved in order to make them excellent. And so, this is, of the thirty-four percent, twenty-six percent talked about remodeling, twenty-four percent talked about deferred maintenance specifically, and sixteen percent talked about the need for space. So, those are the concerns which in the, with the group that see room for improvement, shall we say. We asked about classroom design, and we asked you, they think it's, the classroom design is important to student learning. And the community, a majority feel that it is important, not intensely so, shall we say. Sixty-one percent indicated it was very or somewhat important, thirty-eight percent not too or not at all important. Now, following up then and asking, do they think that the Richfield School District has sufficient flexible learning spaces? You can see fifty-nine percent think you do. Twenty-one percent indicate you don't, and twenty percent are unsure. So, there is a perception that there, there's a belief overall that the classroom design is important, but there is a belief in the district as a whole that you do have sufficient flexible learning spaces. So, perhaps education, this, this all started a few years ago with the twenty-first century classroom spaces and that discussion. And a lot of districts have had to educate the public to show, what are you talking about with flexible twenty-first century learning spaces? What does it look like? How does it work in practice when students are in there with the, with the teachers or the instructors? Any questions on the atmospherics at all in the district that we talked about before we go into the referendum itself?
On the section, buildings and facilities, where you said good or fair or poor, did you suggest possible topics?
No.
Take enough of those on the.
Yep, those are open-ended. And, and there's a, I didn't put it on there, but we have the Minnesota good in there, too. Certain portion of Minnesotans will never grade anything better than good. And so, you follow up with them and said, how can you make it excellent? And they say, there's no need to. It's good. So, that's a portion of it. You know, it's always the risk when you ask somebody in Minnesota that question.
Can we get, just for our own, I think, information and thinking about decisions we need to be making separate from this, some of this information broken down by parents in the district and the folks who are not parents in the district, so we can see how our families are responding to these questions specifically?
Yep. I, I can break down the data any which way. Yep.
Simultaneously, we also did our internal survey of staff and survey of parents and community, and that should end up being presented, I believe, at the next board meeting, because we usually are able to present that. We did ask about a capital question and a operational question, not as scientifically as the Leatherman Company does, but we did it ourselves also.
All right. So, as we ascertained from the atmospheric questions in the district, in the minds of most residents, there are no major, major issues out there. So, the discussion when they go into the voting booth is going to be really what you want it to be. How much does it cost, and what, what is the community getting? The, the key cost-benefit analysis. And so, keeping that in mind, this frames the next section as we look at the bond and the operating levy. We first asked folks, what's their predisposition on a tax increase? Are they against anything that would be put forward? Are they for anything that the district will put forward? Or are they persuadable for some and against others? You're one of the few districts that actually has a positive tax predisposition on this. And by positive, I mean you have twenty-two percent that. And by positive, I mean you have twenty-two percent that say they're for anything versus nineteen percent indicating they're against anything, against everything. So, it's a plus-three. The average across metro right now this election season is a negative-four, meaning there's more opposition than there is support at the onset of an election. But still, you have fifty-six percent that are persuadable. The devil will be in the detail, shall we say, on what their decision is. Now, what's their tax tolerance for a bond referendum? And this is our let's make a deal question. We pick a random starting point and move them up and down depending on their responses. Twenty-nine percent indicated nothing. That is actually a little bit lower than, the norm we see across metro is thirty to thirty-five percent. So, one point, but it's not abnormally high whatsoever. The average comes out for a tax increase of about eleven bucks is what is the tax tolerance at this point in time. Now, boards always ask me, is that set in stone? It is not set in stone. I have seen districts go well above the number because they put in components that are strongly valued by the community, and residents see that value. I have also seen districts come under the number and lose because they have something controversial in the package, a second sheet of ice, artificial turf, something that has become a lightning rod. So, really, it does matter what the package is, and it can move the amount of the people's tolerance for a tax increase. So, when we break down the different components, you could really, you can see, you have four components that are strongly supported or supported.
Excuse me, on the last slide?
Yes.
Where you listed the dollar amounts, is that per a typical household per month? Or what does the ten dollars represent?
Ten dollars per month.
Per month, thank you.
So, you have, in concept, this is, would you support a property tax increase? Four. Deferred maintenance, eighty-one percent of the community would support a property tax increase for that. Safety and security, seventy-nine percent. Seventy-five percent improving traffic flow, parking lots, a pedestrian safety aspect to this. The laboratory areas, seventy-five percent. Improving common areas, seventy percent. Renovation of media centers, sixty-five percent. Redesigning classrooms, sixty-five percent. And then, at the bottom of the list, but still a majority supporting athletic facility improvements. So, you don't have what we call a deal killer in here. A deal killer is thirty-five percent support, sixty percent opposition, where residents really don't think that it's appropriate to include in a bond referendum package. But you can see a real clear hierarchy in where people's minds are at and what's important to them, focused around deferred maintenance and especially safety and security. No surprise on safety and security, ever since the Newtown, Connecticut, five years ago, really did change people's perception. And even if they think, district after district, we'll ask, do they think that the district provides safe learning environments? Ninety-five percent of people will say yes, but you'll still have a result similar to this. You can't be too safe when you're talking kids after what happened in the elementary school. So, we still haven't talked to dollar amount yet, but we want to find out, in everything they've heard for the components that we asked, does this make sense? Does it seem like a good idea, or is it a bad idea? You have a very strong endorsement that it's a good idea. Seventy-five percent of the community indicated it's a good idea strongly, or just a good idea. Only twenty-one percent said a bad idea. So, it really is a strong endorsement. Now, if they said a bad idea, we followed up and asked, is there one component that if it was included, you would vote against the referendum? And that's what's in the lower left-hand corner. And so, the thirty-two percent is reflective of the twenty-one percent. So, approximately seven percent of the community said, if athletic facilities are included, I would vote against the package. But, it's important to note, as you trace back through the data, the twenty-one percent indicating bad idea have already told us that they weren't willing to increase their taxes and weren't for any sort of referendum from the start. So, it really is the opposition at this point indicating that it's a bad idea. So, we told them it was a hundred and sixty-five million dollars, and we asked them, does this seem like a fair price? Kind of looking at the sticker shock aspect. And, you have what we typically see when we go over a hundred million dollars, forty-five, forty-five, ten. A lot of boards think, if we put this number out here, everybody's going to be, it really is an even split in the community. But the key is, how much it costs them? That's the critical number that matters, not so much as the overall price tag. And on the hundred and sixty-five million dollar referendum, you have fifty-three percent support to forty-two percent opposition with the tax increase. Now, the tax increase we tested was well above the tax tolerance by a significant amount. I believe, three to four times higher than the amount that they indicated the tax tolerance. So, even going that much higher, you still had a majority supporting it. See, those components really are important and will get people to consider a larger tax increase at this point in time. If we look at intensity, twenty-two percent strongly support, twenty-one percent strongly opposed. So, it's an even split in intensity at this point in time. Now, the reason for the bond position, on the support side, thirty-one percent indicated the soft reason. Kids are important, education is important. I call it a soft reason because on Election Day, if those folks have something else to do, they'll stay home. What they need to understand is need. And that, you can see, is only eight percent this time. Need leads, needs to lead the list as a reason, because if you're coming home from work and Billy's got hockey, or Anna's got dance, and I think it's important, but I don't necessarily think it's needed, we're seeing time after time again with parents, they're going to choose to go elsewhere instead of vote that day. So, the need needs to be established. On the flip side, the opponents, nobody argued this wasn't needed. Not one person mentioned no need for the package that we've talked about. Their discussion is with the cost and the tax impact at this point in time. On the operating levy side, we now have, and we're told that this is in addition to the bond referendum, it's not just one amount, it's in addition to. Thirty-two percent indicate nothing, so it's within that range that we talk about. And, the average comes in at about seven bucks a month roughly, for a tax tolerance at the outset. You can see also, it's unusual that we have a bell-shaped curve on this chart. Normally, it reflects the chart we saw for the bond referendum where it's a ski slope moving from north, from nothing down to the higher amounts. You actually have a bell-shaped curve. But, the tolerance comes in around seven dollars a month. And, it's pretty much in the range of what we tested on the operating levy, so that when we put forward the fourteen-hundred-and-sixty-five-dollar-per-unit, per pupil unit operating levy, we had sixty percent support to thirty-seven percent opposition. You're also following another trend that we're seeing across metro right now, and that if a district is considering a bond referendum and an operating levy, the operating levy is more supported than the bond referendum at this point in time, district after district. Similar reasons for their position on the levy, at this point, the soft reason for support is the education or children are important, and the main reason for opposition is the taxes and the cost at this point in time. We tested a few arguments in favor and against an operating levy. And, for the most part, the light green bars, people indicated that they caused them to be much more likely to support, the dark green, somewhat more likely to support. And, these arguments for supporters were basically in an echo chamber. The most effective argument is the state education funding has not kept pace. Twenty-nine percent indicated they were much more likely. It caused four percent of the sample to switch their position from opposition to support. The argument that it provides the district long-term financial stability, thirty percent indicated much more likely, four percent indicated they were willing to switch. So, there are some arguments that have some movement. On the flip side, the arguments against the operating levy, they do create more movement. And it is because they're centered, centered on the two themes that we saw earlier, a growing concern on taxes and a perception that school districts are adequately funded. So, at this point in time, the local taxes going up too quickly, and the district needs to do a better job, better job spending, switch about ten to eleven percent of opposition, support to opposition. So, they are effective arguments, especially in this heightened time of concern on both of those questions. So, they've heard everything, what would their behavior be in November? Fifty-three percent indicate that they would support the bond, forty-two percent indicated they would oppose it, and on the operating levy, fifty-eight to thirty-seven. Now, the final trend that the district is following across the metro area is the trend that's gone opposite to about the last ten years we've been doing polling. And that is, in the early days of planning for a referendum, likely voters tend to be more supportive than the residents overall. Because pro-education folks are more in tune, they're hearing things, and so typically, if you have fifty-four percent support amongst likely voters, it might go to fifty-eight, fifty-nine percent. Since November two thousand and sixteen, likely voters across the metro area are less likely to support referendum than the community as a whole. So, as you can see from the chart, amongst the likely voters, the bond referendum moves from fifty-three to fifty-one percent support, and the operating levy moves from fifty-eight to fifty-six percent support. You're losing two.
Is the support built on a dollar amount, or just the general notion of one?
The general notion. It's not as high a drop as we've seen, I just reported out a six-point drop, and from the overall to likely voters. But, the basis of this amongst likely voters is the profile of who's likely telling us at this point in time, they're likely to turn out. And, at this point, millennials are much less likely to turn out. It's a pattern that we're starting to see. Parents are less likely than they are. Households containing preschoolers are much more likely, much less likely. Community education users. So, a lot of those key groups that lead to successful referendums at this point are indicating they're not as motivated to vote. A lot of that is ramification coming out of what happened in November, no doubt. But, it will require a real strong grassroots effort here. The support in the community as a whole is out there for what you're considering. Perhaps mitigating back the bond referendum closer, I don't, you know, how the components work and everything, but a reduction in the total cost, because this discussion isn't need versus not need, it's need versus cost in the minds of residents. But, overall, the real challenge will be to get out the vote effort on Election Day in order to ensure a successful passage of the referendum. We did look at class sizes, finally. And, class sizes are a concern in the district, and they are more so, more so at the high school level. Forty-seven percent indicate they think there are too many kids for class sizes in the high school, forty-one percent in the middle school, and thirty-five percent in the elementary schools. And they were given specific numbers, this wasn't just, do you think? I think we told them, the average class size in elementary schools is X. Do you think it's too high about the right amount or too few? So, class sizes are a concern across the district as a whole in the schools, but more so at the secondary level than the elementary school level. And that is different than what we see across the metro area as a whole, where most districts, the concern amongst parents specifically and the community is class sizes in the elementary schools. And then, just two questions on communications. Where are folks getting their information? You have a dominated communication network, thirty-seven percent say the district newsletter, fifteen percent the website, fourteen percent mailings, ten percent, the grapevine is alive and lush with one in ten residents, indicating that is their principal source of information, and then cable television, very high at ten percent. And then, everything else comes down. How do folks prefer to receive their information? Print. Fifty-five percent indicate they prefer the, a mail newsletter, fourteen percent email, district website, e-newsletter, and then everything else drops down into single digits. So, your communication network really does line up pretty well with people's desire for print, but absolutely electronic means are necessary secondary, they're just not seen as primary at this point in time. That's not atypical from any other district. So, I would be happy to answer any more questions you might have.
What group do you see coming outboarding this tournament? In terms of numbers participating?
As a, as a whole right now, most likely voters, or which groups are more supportive of a bond and an operating levy?
Okay, I mean, I saw that, but I mean, are we talking seniors? Are we talking parents of school-age kids? Are we talking?
Your most supportive groups would, community education users, forty-five and under residents, preschool households, households containing children, and then political ideology plays in there absolutely. But, at this point in time, those groups are underrepresented than they are in the overall sample demographics. Does that make sense? No?
So, I know that you said in your, in your summary, you were very positive about these numbers, but, for me, spending effectively and efficiently is sixty-four percent rating, and honest spending is sixty-six percent rating, doesn't, from my perception, that doesn't sound great. And I know you've come from a, a different world of it, and you're a professional in this, but can you explain that to me?
I mean, it really is, I mean, I, we go back to, if we go back to the Helsion days of Jesse, quote-unquote Helsion days of Jesse, shall we say. With the two thousand and one referendum, if you think back to that environment, and that was created with accountability, and the districts aren't spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently, he eroded that in the discussions where districts were coming in forty percent agreement, forty-five percent disagreement, or, I'm sorry, fifty-five percent disagreement, way down. It has grown now, but still, what you have, because it's not only tied in, are you spending taxpayers' money effectively and efficiently, it's tied into your perception of taxes too. And so, they're not only calculating in how you're spending it, but how much is it costing, and putting in a value condition. So, your universe is never going to be a hundred percent of people agreeing with that, that you spend it effectively and efficiently, because if you go back to that perception of property taxes, fifty percent think their taxes are high. So, if you want to flip it, you have roughly twenty-five percent of people disagreeing with the statement, but fifty percent think their taxes are high. So, half of those that think their taxes are high, think you are spending it effectively and efficiently. Is that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, there are lots of things out there, and, you know, when you test awareness, the universe, or the potential's not a hundred percent on some questions. On Election Day, you will have twenty-five percent of people that have no idea you have a referendum. It, it, it doesn't matter how much information you have, one quarter of people will not be aware that a referendum is happening the next day. It's just how it is, and it will never be a hundred percent.
So, as I understand, more support for an operational referendum, somewhere in the seven dollars a month range is where it sits right now before a campaign?
Yes.
Which would be around what would equalize us already with other surrounding districts. As I understand, then, you would be suggesting that long-term financial stability is one of those key points?
Yes.
And, reducing, reducing possible future cuts and mitigating previous cuts would be sort of those pieces from an operational perspective? Is that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, financial stability, much more so than, with testing the argument on the neighbors and everything, it's much more important to what's happening within the districts itself, not what's happening to, with the neighbors, shall we say. The financial footing is very important, the stability, because as folks see, and they see it if we do just, there's uncertainty in the political environment in St. Paul every year on what's, what's happening there.
And then, from a facility perspective, you said the tax tolerance starts around eleven, but, really looks at deferred maintenance, looks at things like safety and security, traffic flow, and then commons and labs areas with a significant number suggesting to improve. So, as we look at that hundred and sixty-five million dollar possible request, well, that looks at currently a fifty-three, forty-two, you'd suggest, what would you suggest around that? That we examine and look towards minimizing that, or shrinking that a little bit?
Yeah, like, like I mentioned, I think pulling it back closer. You don't have any components that people oppose that you say you have to pull out. What you do have though, is just a price that's too much, it's just too much for the average resident. It's not a little question of whether they want to, it's a question of. It's not a question of whether they want to, it's a question of whether they can. So, anything that could be done to scale it back, you don't need to go down to the eleven bucks a month, because you have four of those components that have seventy-five percent support. You know, I think if you could put a package together, you know, in the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, in that range, there's enough support in the community on those key components of safety, security, deferred maintenance, that it should be enough to be successful, as long as there's also correlating that grassroots effort to get the support out.
One quick question on, one of the questions that is sometimes asked in these surveys is about a single question versus multiple questions. It seems like the structure of your survey was sort of structurally set up to look at multiple questions, would you agree with that, as opposed to a single ballot question?
It allows the flexibility. It's set up intentionally with, as we list out those components, you know, some districts are in the position, they know what the question is, and they just want to do a survey and say, fifty million includes XXX, do you support or oppose? By pulling out the components like that, you can see whether there's levels of support, opposition, what are key factors. You know, the question on multiple questions, it doesn't make sense. I mean, is it a package, you know, if I look at that list, if there was one thing to pull out, but I have no idea the total price in a hundred-and-sixty-five million, athletic facilities. Might warrant a second question, I don't know the price, I don't know if it's two million dollars is part of the package whatsoever. But none of the others seem to make sense, because they all kind of fall into the theme of capacity, safety, and deferred maintenance, those building, I don't know how you break it out into different, and it's probably not necessary if the cost can come down.
So, it's important, and I'm going to state again for board members, because we'll come back to this in the business part of our agenda, and Mr. Leatherman will probably go along with our consultants from ICS. As I see the recommendation based on the information shared, I'll be asking the board for support to go back with our consultants from ICS, and with Mr. Holgy, and with our option creators, to look at some ballot language around a referendum request, an operational request that would go to the, somewhere in the seven dollars per home range, which would get us the entire conversation that we've been talking about in the four-hundred-and-fifty-dollar range, give or take, per student. And then I'll also be asking the board in regard to somewhere in the range of, you know, fifteen to twenty dollars, and again, we won't need to finalize that today, but to be working with ICS and our option creators to come back with a specific proposal based on our survey data and ballot language that we can move forward on in July in regard to a possible referendum request. And so, it's important that we ask any questions now that would lead us to being able to vote on that in the time that it comes up on the agenda.
So, I just want to clarify that when you were talking about the two different referendums, that when you were talking money totals, that they were, there was complete understanding that that's the full total, everything?
Yep.
Not just each separate one as a separate entity, but that those two numbers will be added together, and that will be the tax-
Right. We actually, in the survey, pull it all together at the end for the resident. When we come back and do that post-test and say, what will you do in November if the bond and the operating levy are on the ballot, it will cost X, the total amount, because they will, you know, the bond and the operating levy, it's the total number that matters most. So, they're reminded in the tax tolerance question, but it's all pulled together back for them at the end of the survey.
And then, just as a reminder, we have Ryan and Pat also from ICS, if there are any questions in relation to what they would be tasked to help with in regard to creating a proposal around a facility, going back with our option creators. We also have them here for questions, along with Mr. Leatherman.
Can you remind me that the hundred-and-sixty-five million that was used as a benchmark, that was based on a facility study, is that correct, or is that just nearly, you know, a fair representation of the all-in, by and sky?
Yeah, that was everything except for that tier-three LTFM proposal, so it's all of the improvements, I believe it was all of the improvements, as well as the level-one and level-two long-term facilities maintenance.
Within the questions for the hundred-and-sixty-five million, was it clarified what monthly impact that would be, or was that held separate? I mean, do we break down the math for them and say, you know, would you favor, would you support a hundred-and-sixty-five million? But on a different one, we asked about a monthly burden that they'd be willing to shoulder, and-
Yeah, the hundred-and-sixty-five million, we give them two price points. I believe we put on-
Hundred and eighty.
Yeah. Was it two-hundred and three-hundred thousand? Thank you. The specific wording. If voters approved a hundred-and-sixty-five million-dollar bond referendum for twenty-five years to fund this construction, the owner of a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home would see a monthly property tax increase of about twenty-one dollars per month, or two-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars per year, while the owner of a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar home would see a monthly increase of about forty dollars per month, or four-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars per year. And so, and keeping in mind that that eleven dollars, we did test significantly higher at the comfort level, and still had this.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to commendations. Page sixty through sixty-four begins Mira, and I'm going to do, since we have a lot of commendations, I'm going to do some summarizing. Received a letter from Mira, which is one of our Latino partners, which is a Latino Resource Association in Richfield, whose mission is to empower Latino families, children, and individuals in South Hennepin County by promoting their educational, economic, and social development. And they just wanted to share their appreciation with the board and the district for an almost now fifteen-year partnership. They are excited, as they've met with Dr. Robie, as we continue to expand opportunities to connect and partner with them, because they have partnered now with our newly-founded Richfield Community Education Program, which launches July first, and so we're working coherently and cohesively with them. And you'll see in pages sixty-two through sixty-four, they've done some significant work to try to align our strategic plan with the specific areas and goals of Mira. And so, they just wanted to send that letter to share pleasure with our work moving community ed into the umbrella of Richfield, and obviously continuing on to deepen that partnership. So, thank you, thank you all from Mira. Richfield Spartan Foundation, you have programs in front of you. We were, had the opportunity, the longtime partners to the Richfield Spartan Foundation held their honor annual scholarship breakfast. Twenty-five of our students received scholarships. So, congratulations to all of our twenty-five students receiving scholarships from one of our great partners in the Richfield Spartan Foundation. Richfield art teacher at the high school, Jen Cotsmith-Crouse, reports that ten students from Richfield High were individually recognizing for their outstanding artwork at the twenty-seventeen Metro West Conference Visual Arts Exhibition Awards Program and Reception hosted by Normandale Community College. Additionally, two were selected to win achievement awards, Brandon Bandit and Alexandra Medvek. All ten students received the Metro West Visual Arts Exhibition certificates. We thank our team, our team of students, and Ms. Cotsmith-Crouse for being there at the Metro West. We received a letter from RDLS kindergarten teacher, Hanar Zamakola, writing to Principal Shasivan and myself. Sadly, that her visa extension was not approved, and we had been working with Ms. Zamakola and the government to try to keep her at RDLS for an extended period of time. She just wanted to specifically say thank you to both of us, but thank you also to the district. She's felt supported, and wanted to share with you all that it's been a pleasure to work for RDLS with all amazing staff and families. We're hopeful that Ms. Zamakola will be able to get a visa in the future and return to us, and we will welcome her back with open arms if she is able to procure that. The Brand Lab has awarded marketing internships to two deserving high school students, Giovanni Molina Escandon and Larry Lopez Servin. So, they'll be working eight weeks long, marketing and advertising industrial professionals. They'll also be among sixty-five rising stars from thirteen high schools across the metro. So, thanks and commendation to Dean Brewer, who goes above and beyond to ensure that they're given every opportunity for a great future. We also received a great commendation from Kathy Bateson to the Richfield Community Facebook page after her daughter, Bloomington Kennedy player Sarah suffered a serious injury. The players on both teams came together to meet her daughter with well wishes and homemade cards, meant very much to her, and she was very proud of Richfield High School, calling our team a very classy group of young ladies there representing our school, our program, our coaches, and most of all, our community, and that we should all be very proud of them. Finally, you also have a letter sent to us from RDLS music teacher Kathy Luby-Kemmen, who has retired this spring, but she wanted to share a letter she received as a commendation from student Julia Groth, a student in her first class enrolled in the immersion program. And Julia notes that music has played an incredible opportunity in her life, RDLS has been an amazing influence on her life, and she is seeking out to commend our district for a strong music program, and also Ms. Kathy Luby-Kemmen for her exceptional work in music and at RDLS. So, that is a long list of commendations, but as we end our school year, we have a lot to be proud of, and so, there we have it.
Thank you. So, now we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll move the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the consent agenda is approved. So, we'll move on to old business and our procedure and policy review, starting with the collections policy.
All right, so this is a second read. We are actually, if you recall, we looked to review it one more time without passing. As we also recall, we did a survey in district of our parents and of our staff. We're going to wait for further report in July in regard to perspective on collections, so we can take all information in advance. Note that, reported early from Mr. Patterness, who is overseeing the survey, it's approximately fifty-eight percent are not currently supportive of utilizing collections, forty-two percent are supportive of utilizing collections, if we are above that hundred-dollar mark. And so, something for us to consider. As we also recall, prior to moving a policy in regard to unpaid meals, we discussed as a board and administrative team having a wider collections policy, and since we aren't sure of where we stand on that, we're not putting the collections policy forward, and then also, we have removed collections language from the unmet meals policy, so that we can make sure that we're all on the same page prior to either moving ahead or just putting it into a holding pattern. So, any questions about collections?
I think that, as we've all experienced, when we first started going down this road, that this is a challenging conversation, and it doesn't, it's never going to feel good. And so, I guess in terms of thinking about those survey responses, did we ask that question sort of as a cold ask, or was there any information provided?
It was more just a straight, do you support utilizing collections for significant unpaid meal debt?
Got it. Okay, so that helps, that helps put some context around those numbers, so thank you.
So, we will move on to mail charge debit procedure.
Okay. So, if you'll notice, we did some language updates based on feedback, and as we recall, we are required to pass this in regard to USDA. So, if there are concerns, we can certainly address them at this time. We can also pass and review in the future. And so, just as a reminder, we did some cleanup of language, and we actually did some of those at the last minute today with ongoing board questions and board input, clarifying language around amount owed, balance, and then also removing all language in regard to collections policy. So, I do believe that everything in there is clarified based on board members' expectations.
Did you look at who would be the person kind of relating the issue of a debt that needs to be paid?
Yes, we did remove nutrition services. If you look in secondary students where it was number two, you see a cross out of nutrition staff will verbally alert all students, it's actually just going to be the automated calls, and so we've removed them from that equation. So, we do have that covered.
All right. Are we, are we on this?
Yeah.
Yes.
I would be willing to move this policy as revised.
Okay.
I'll second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Baraki. Is there any discussion?
I just want to clarify, at a prior meeting, we talked about, you know, we have a requirement or regulatory requirement to have this in place, and I brought up before this, this doesn't have to be our, the one we have forever, right? So, like all of our policies, it's a little bit nimble or malleable. It's fair to say that if we reread this in the light of, you know, in the upcoming days, we could revisit it any time.
Absolutely. So, we have a five-year cycle, which we're working on, but at any point if a board member requests a policy to be reviewed, we can certainly do that.
Thank you.
And I'll just appreciate the amount of time that we have spent talking about this as well over the last few months, you know, as Pete just said about the collections policy. I think this also has been a really, you know, difficult thing for us to reckon with and think about what is the responsible and appropriate balance of ensuring the well-being of all of our students and the long-term financial health of our district. And this is, this is a really difficult policy, at least speaking for me personally, in terms of how to reconcile those things, and I appreciate the amount of time and conversation that has gone into this. And, as Tim said, that we can revisit it as we continue to learn and reevaluate how this actually works in our school system.
Very good. So, I will review that we had a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Ms. Baraki, and we have had discussions, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the policy passes. So, we move on to the wellness policy.
All right, and so similarly, we have made those changes. This is another policy that we have to pass today to be able to move forward with the USDA guidelines. These are based on the USDA guidelines. These are also things that are expected to be implemented for us to continue to receive the reasonably large sums of money that we receive to support our students' nutrition needs. And as Mr. Paulus pointed out, if there are things that in the light of day or in the future we do determine need some additional review, these are things that we can, we can go back to.
But just to clarify, though, some of these are, we have constraints, and some of these apparently are mandated by the USDA.
Absolutely.
So, you know, the flexibility around this one is, you know, we had to have a policy on collections. However we happen to craft it, I think, was left largely or significantly to us.
Yes, most of this are things that are pushed on us by the USDA, and just as a reminder, we do receive free fresh food and vegetables, somewhere around a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars a year to feed our students in our elementary schools. We've received somewhere in the range of a quarter of a million dollars' worth of equipment to increase the number of meals served and the access to students to free breakfast, which we also have begun offering the last three years across all of our schools. We've absolutely increased the number of meals served throughout every single building within Richfield Public Schools, cutting down serving time and increasing instructional time. The funds that have made that possible are absolutely requiring us to have this, to have this policy in place.
I just want to note, I mean, within the one twelve-point-one, the physical education, the minutes are blank, the teacher-to-student ratio no greater than blank to blank. And so, we, there is still work to be done on this in terms of wrapping it up. I mean, we, I personally wouldn't have a problem passing it as is if we're under time constraint, but-
So, technically, we're taking action on the policy, correct, as opposed to taking action on the guidelines? Am I getting that correct? Mr. Holgy?
Yeah, I was, I was just noticing that I'm scanning my emails here quickly, because I noticed that those are missing. It is taking action on the policy, so that is the official board action. The administrative guidelines support that. It looks like with the track changes, the minutes got dropped out, and so I was looking frantically to see what it is. We did work with the teaching and learning department to identify what those minutes are at each one of the grade levels and built that into the administrative guidelines, but the board action is about the policy specifically with the administrative guidelines supporting that. So, we will certainly bring that back and send that out for communication so that you're aware of what those are. Interestingly enough, the physical education standards are currently under review and new guidelines coming out from MDE, and so, much of that will change or will be reviewed separate once those new standards come out from MDE.
So, it sounds like we'll probably have to go back to the guidelines, and we should focus specifically on the two pages of policy.
I'll move the policy as presented. I will second the motion.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Tensing. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the wellness policy passes. So, we will move on to the pay-to-ride policy.
Mr. Holgy?
And this is something that the board has seen about a month ago and is up for review again. The biggest changes here in the pay-to- The biggest changes here in the pay-to-ride policy have to do with the fees and the rates that are charged for the pay-to-ride service. The transportation department worked through some recommendations at looking at how to improve ridership, how to provide a more equitable distribution of what the fee is across the school year, across the calendar year, and then also to help support the planning, identified an early registration discount so that we can schedule those buses and get it set up as part of the normal route. And so we are bringing that forth. We did revise those so those rates fall into the board policy and administrative guidelines supporting that, just for clarity and a review of that policy and admin guidelines consistent or simultaneous to the rate changes. And so the request is to approve the policy with those, with those rates or the changes in fees for 2017, 2018 school year. This will help support the communication as we move into the enrollment process and send out communications preparing for next school year.
I'll move the policy as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Brackey. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the pay-to-ride policy passes. So we will now move on to new business and long-term facilities maintenance for District 280.
Yes, thank you. This is something that we are required to do annually is identify a long-term facilities maintenance budget and a 10-year plan associated with that. It is required to be completed prior to the end of July. You actually have two long-term facilities maintenance proposals for you. One is for Richfield Schools IST 280 and then the second one is for the intermediate school 287. You had a chance about two months ago to hear some of the projects that were taking place this current year as well as some of the planned projects. You have a revised budget that's included in the packet as well. The larger projects within the 2017-18 school year account for exterior wall repairs, tuck pointing and sealance at Centennial Elementary, which has already been bid, the partial re-roofing at RSTEM, which has already been bid for next year, district-wide card access system replacement, fencing and landscaping at Sheridan Elementary, asbestos abatement and fluoridile installation at the high school in Centennial Elementary, and a partial re-roofing at Central. The total budget for the FY 18 year this coming July through June is $1,331,741. So just in the scope of when we're looking at the larger long-term facilities maintenance needs across the district, you can see that this is just a small portion of what is needed within the organization, but it is part of that general allocation that is identified for the district. It really combines both our deferred maintenance as well as our health and safety, what used to be deferred maintenance and health and safety for Richfield Schools and so that is what this budget is specifically for. If approved, this would then be built into the levy for the levy certification at the end of this in December.
Craig, can you, can you talk to why the upcoming year is about 1.3 million and every year after that is pretty much the same number, 1.8? Is it because we affirmed up bidding on the, on that upcoming year?
No, the legislature approved an increase in that combination of alternative facilities, deferred maintenance, and health and safety. So we have seen some incremental changes. It wasn't a jump to that 1.8 million immediately. I think it was the three-year tier, if I remember correctly, but that's why you see that increase for next, for the FY 19 year and then moving forward.
And then just to clarify on the technicalities, knowing that obviously we've just had a conversation about a capital bond referendum and we know that deferred maintenance is a big portion of that potential ask as well, can you just clarify on the technicalities around limitations on this particular funding mechanism as opposed to mechanisms that we need to go to the voters for approval?
So there are actually three components of long-term facilities maintenance. One is what the annual levy that's provided for the board to be able to do for general deferred maintenance, health and safety, and that alternative facilities component of just building improvements. Those are specifically for things that are replacements or maintenance of existing facilities. These cannot be used for new facilities or remodeling per se. It really has to be a remodeling of certain projects and have to fit certain criteria. There is a second component that allows the board authority for a larger bond issue associated with certain components of long-term facilities maintenance, including HVAC systems and asbestos and things like that. So there's some authority that's provided for the board. And then beyond those certain components, even the maintenance needs require voter-approved referendum. So I don't have the exact dollars for each one of those or the criteria, but basically there are three tiers. There's the annual award, there's the authority to bond for certain items, and then there is the ability to go and ask for the voters, ask the voters for a referendum to help support that maintenance at a higher level.
So thank you for that clarification and I think probably suffice to say that what we're asking for or what you're presenting in this particular request is those items that fall under the authority that would be statutorily granted for these items and that additional items would fall under other statutory areas.
And these are really articulated as part of a per-average daily membership attendance. So this is a per-student award or authority for levy within those confines of what is permitted for those areas.
Thank you. Are you prepared for motion, Madam Chair? If so, I will move the request as presented.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the motion passes for long-term facilities maintenance for District 280 and we will move on to long-term facilities maintenance District 287.
Thank you. Similarly, intermediate District 287 has the authority to request levy authority from the boards as a member of that intermediate 287 to tax the taxpayers of Richfield for that portion. Intermediate District 287's total long-term facilities maintenance budget is $912,000. Richfield's share on that is $74,866 and so that would then be included on our levy as a portion of that. Each one of the member districts has a requirement to issue that long-term facilities maintenance as part of their local district and membership in intermediate 287.
And I assume that figure is based on the number of Richfield students who are enrolled in 287. It's not equally divided across the member districts, but it's student proportional?
It is proportional to the size of the districts and the participation, correct?
Is, is there any compelling reason, basis we'd have to disagree with that figure? I mean, none, correct?
No.
Okay, I just, I just want to be clear. I mean, this is, all the member districts are presented with this number. We have some input, we have representation on their board, but the extent to which we've been provided, you know, really depth of information, I suppose we have access to it, but the depth of information that's been offered to us without us asking is pretty thin.
Yeah. Long-term facilities maintenance is specifically coming, it's within the authority of what 287 is for the proportion, for the member districts. We are reviewing as part of the Business Director's Advisory Committee with 287, we are reviewing the lease levy portion of that and what that proportionality is. That is tied specifically with participation from member districts. We, there are a few districts like Richfield that have our lease levy impacted by that participation beyond what the authority for the intermediate districts awards are and so I'm a member of a subcommittee that will be reviewing how that amount is identified and what that recommendation is as far as the proportionality of the lease levy, but the long-term facilities maintenance is separate from that conversation.
I'll move the resolution as presented.
Can I say?
We have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Cole. Did you say resolution?
This is a resolution.
It is a resolution, so we will pull the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Ms. Brackey?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye and the motion passes. We will move on to the 27, 2018 adopted budget. Again, Mr. Holgy?
Thank you. And I have a brief presentation that highlights some of the information, the more detailed budget that you had included in the packet. This is something that the board is required to approve prior to June 30th and so we ask hopefully for your approval on this one as well tonight. Really, we'll take a look at four areas, an overview, revenues and expenditures, and then some discussion about the fund balancer where we're using some additional revenue. Overall, we see the proposed budget and the change from last year to, from our current year to next year is included. We see reductions in both revenue as well as in expenditures, in the general fund specifically. You will see that there is some large increases in revenue in the current year and increases in expenditures in the FY 18 year specifically for Fund VII and Fund 47. Those are specifically tied with the bond refunding, where we have a crossover where we received the revenue from that bond in our current FY 17 year. Those bonds don't come due until the FY 18 year and so we realize the revenue in that reissue this year, but we realize the expenditure in next year. And so that bottom corner of $19,802,000 is not increased expenditures other than the revenue that was taken in this current year. This just takes a look at our 16-17 budget compared to the 17-18 proposed budget. You can see that our FY 17 revised budget, we're projecting about a $37,000, a $37,000 balance in our revenues and expenditures in the general fund. You see that $21 million at the bottom, but again, that's part of that bond refunding. We are proposing a deficit spend of about $261,000 in our general fund, assuming that is coming out of some assigned fund balances that we have acquired for technology specifically as well as some of our program initiatives to help support our implementation of the seven-period day for this current year. So that $261,000 deficit spending is coming specifically out of assigned fund balance, not out of the unassigned fund balance and we anticipate the unassigned fund balance will still hit the 4.4% target that the board identified earlier this year. This is just a highlight of that same piece. Total revenues for FY 18 include $77,4,711, which is a $21,778 decrease in revenue specifically tied in with those bond refundings. The general fund is realizing a $60,325,865 revenue, which is a $1.152 million decrease from our FY 17. We believe those are specifically tied in with student enrollment, some reductions and planned reductions in federal grants as well as the bond refunding. When we look at where that money is coming from, we, and the changes there, you can see that that's articulated with about $2 million coming from the federal revenue through MDE, $14 million in local revenues, which includes the bond, or $14 million in the local revenues including our levies, and then state revenues accounts for $43 million. And you can see those variations of how that changed in each one of those areas. In the expenditures, we're anticipating $97,534,000 in expenditures. That's a $19,802,000 decrease, increase from the revised FY 17, sorry. The general fund is a $60,587,000 proportion, which is $853,000 decrease from the revised FY 17. Reductions are specifically accounted for in the salaries and wages, purchase services and other expenditures. When we looked at the reductions that were needed for current year, those were the areas that were identified most specifically. There are some increases in supplies and materials as well as some capital expenditures as well as that bond refunding. And then we're planning to use $261,000 from assigned fund balances to help support those program initiatives and the implementation and mitigate the impact of the budget reductions that were needed. Again, this just kind of is another way of looking at where those areas are, looking at capital expenditures, debt service, employee benefits, other expenditures, other financing uses, purchase services, salaries and wages, and supplies and materials and the proportion of each one of those areas as well as the percentage change. And then so just moving forward, we're looking at that adopted budget prior to June 30, June 30 of 2017 and then just am available for any questions that you might have.
It says here the 31st, Craig.
I didn't realize that as I was saying that.
Sorry.
I edited it out loud. It was a verbal change. I apologize for that.
Should we forgive him?
I'd say yes.
Madam Chair, I will move the fiscal 18 adopted budget as presented.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye and the 17-18 adopted budget passes. We will move on to authorization for services.
Alright, so this is more an informal request than a formal official request, but even though it's informal, I'm asking the board for guidance on the next steps after hearing Mr. Leatherman reviewing and processing through some of the information given to us by our partners at ICS. I am going to request that the board authorize me to work with our consultants to go back to the table a little bit in regard to our capital, ideally to come back to this group in July with a referendum ballot language proposal. And currently in that gray area between two or three questions, thinking from an operational perspective in the range of $7 per month for an average home in Richfield, which brings us up to the full conversation that we have talked about previously, puts us competitive, but we wouldn't then use that language. We'd be talking about long-term financial stability of our organization and talking about managing cuts, present cuts and future cuts and utilizing those funds in that area. And so that would be, that seemed to me a pretty clear conversation from an operational perspective. Question two in regard to capital, somewhere in the range of $15 a month, which totals us around 100 million or 95 million, I believe. And then looking at a possible second question then that brings us closer to $21 a month for capital, so, which would then put us in the $135 million range, give or take, which would get all of the, all of the items that seem to have been highly identified in regard to our survey. So looking at, again, I don't have exact answers in regard to that capital, but that's why I want to work with our option creators to really work through the data prior to coming back with, with some specific ballot language and then also a recommendation on, obviously, one question for operational, but then one or two from a capital facility perspective. Mr. Holgy, did you have any commentary on that or does that...
No, and just for clarity purposes, because I think Pat was looking for some clarity on exactly what that tax tolerance was and as Peter was leaving, he did confirm that his opinion was with information. There certainly is the capacity for the $21 on the bond specifically as well as the $7 on the operating in an overall summary portion. And so that's that opportunity, I would say, just for clarity on that presentation because I think he had mentioned the, you know, up to $20 or $20, $21 and it was not clear if that included the operating or if that was just the bond specifically.
So just to repeat then, 21 and 7. And then the question with regard to the 21 from a capital perspective is to get there through one question or through two questions is, or did he have a perspective on that or not?
I don't believe he...
I think what he said was the perspective was if there was something in the, in the whole, in the total list that might be a deal breaker to isolate it within the second, you know, for, I think within his examples or his data, say athletic, athletic facilities leave them on a standalone so they're not a poison pill for the rest of the needed facility.
That's what I heard as well. I mean, I think, I think that what this boils down to is a couple, a couple of, a couple of considerations. The first is knowing that if we put all of our eggs in one basket, then we're risking, we're risking more, of course. The second is how effectively we can communicate with our voters about what the asks are and how effectively we can educate our voters on the value that they would derive from voting for a particular, voting yes or no on a particular ballot question. So to me, those are the operative questions that we need to consider as we look at dividing. I don't know if other board members have a perspective on that?
When you, you're saying on the, on the division on the facilities?
Correct. I mean, it sounds like, and it sounds like operations and facilities are inherently separated.
And, and so we, we would be authorizing the administration to go through the process of preparing for, do we have to, do we have to clarify now that it's one question or two on, on facilities or just the, the idea of gathering bids and information to enable that final decision in July?
Just to enable us to go around that work to, to, what you'd be saying in principle is, is that you all support an operational and that one's pretty clear at 7, you all support us going for a cap- all support us going for a capital referendum, and that we would then work to craft ballot language based on further study of the survey, further study of the option creators and our priorities, and, and would enable us to move forward and determine one question or two, and bring that back to this group.
And, and when you're, when you're citing option creators, Steve, I think we're talking about the facility study that we recently had completed that helps us to identify what sort of investment we can make at a particular level of funding.
Correct. Our option creators are made up of community members, of parents, I believe there are students on the group, there are staff, and there are administrators on that group. And so there's a wide range of representation within, within those, that group to talk about priorities.
I will be publicly vulnerable and just say, even just in this conversation, it's been hard to track all of the numbers and terms that have been flying around.
Yep.
Which I think only underscores the point of how important it is to be very clear and use understandable language as we are starting to talk about this. I think even for us as a board in setting like this, I think getting clear about what would be in the operating request, the types of things that people could expect from that, understanding that financial stability did seem to be a really key motivating factor, but I think, and still, what are, what are things that that additional seven dollars a month, if that is what it is, would do. A point of clarification, so if the numbers that have been thrown around here, I think I was tracking seven dollars a month for operating, and potentially up to twenty-one dollars a month for capital, first of all, is that?
Correct.
Was I following that correctly?
Correct.
So a total of twenty-eight dollars a month per, you know, two-hundred thousand dollars. That, to me, feels very high. And I know that we have this data from this firm, and there's more that I want to do to really dig into the results, but I am just really surprised that that would be a tolerance level. And so that's, that's just a question that I have, that I, I'm going to need a lot more information about.
I think also, though, the twenty-one was the all-in ask, I believe. And so it, as, as was presented, it's possible that we scale it back and really strip it back to the essentials, the things that hit the, the highlights within the, the survey results of, you know, true facility needs, you know, long-term maintenance, security, and, and lighter on the whistles and bells, and?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that that is relatively clear from the survey, that we would have, you know, that we're, we're in pretty safe territory if we're talking about maintenance, if we're talking about protecting our existing investments. And so I guess that's what I was hearing, Steve, when I was hearing you talking about looking at those option creators, is that we aren't necessarily settling on a dollar amount for that, for that, for that facilities ask, rather.
Correct. When we go back to the option creators, it's going to be more about, they're going to be pushed to look at the priorities again, which as I heard them from a capital perspective, were deferred maintenance, safety and security, traffic flow, and then common spaces and labs, kind of those were the four things in that order. They would look to see if there was a logical line from a dollar figure in that regard. They probably wouldn't go above what that twenty-one would be, but they would see where that would sit, and they would see about drawing specific lines, and then make a determination based on that conversation, does it seem like one question, does it seem like two questions, and where are those dollar figures? And so that's, that's what we want to be able to do.
And, and from a practical standpoint, in terms of being able to get information out in the, the groups that tend to support this, we, we need to have this settled by July at the, at the absolute latest, correct?
Yes and no, and I don't want to give away our July meeting and say August eighth. I mean, by statute, we could go later.
No, I understand.
I think the, we have a wonderful CQC, and we have a wonderful team of parents, some of whom are here tonight to hear this conversation. I think the more guidance we give them, the better. I think by tonight, giving this particular permission to go and, and do that work, they would be hearing that there would be a significant operational request around seven dollars per student, or I mean, seven dollars per average home per month. And they would be hearing somewhere in the range of tw, up to twenty, twenty-one dollars per month, from a capital facility perspective. They would be hearing the bullet points, and I would be reviewing with our CQC team, or Mr. Holgi would, some of those top bullet points from our survey of what are the things that we would be, really be looking for in a capital facility. But then the sooner we get them actual ballot language, and the sooner we get exact dollar figures, the more they're empowered to do work that they're doing as, as community members.
Because the key is really is getting the specific information out there about exactly what we're planning to do. I would highly recommend going against making this decision later than July.
Yes.
Because of the work that they have to do, and I've seen it hands-on, that it is a lot of work, and it takes, there's a certain amount of lead time for getting information out.
I think what Mr. Leatherman was clear on was that our communications, people getting out and voting, us sharing specific information would be of vital importance to the success of any referendum efforts, and so the earlier we decide what we would be recommending and asking the community for, the more enabled our CQC, but then also part of the role of the district, and we've done one referendum before, is, is effectively and appropriately sharing information. And as we've learned, that newsletters are very important, and so being able to send out newsletters and prepare information for our community, the faster we have that information, the more effective we'll be able to communicate that information appropriately and correctly.
And then I, I also agree with your statement that that twenty-eight dollars a month sounds like a lot, and I've, I've trusted a survey in the past, and I think that we need to think really carefully about that.
Yeah.
And not put too much weight into, you know, that one, that one survey.
I would echo that sentiment, and then I think we do want to ask our stakeholders to take a hard look at priorities, and to, you know, look at, look at those priorities which are considered sort of really the top must-haves, and then look at those that might be nice to have.
I want to add, Steve, something. I've been saying, since I started last year, that I found that there was a huge focus on social media communications, and I'm glad to see that the data is showing the importance of hard copies from the culturally responsive point of view. Thinking of Centennial and information the principal shared with us before, that less than twenty percent of parents have a working email, that in, in a big part of our community does not go to Facebook to find information. So I, I hope that we are able to, to really be able to share in writing that communication.
Yeah, so the CQC does do postcard, emailings, and they do a lot of direct communication.
And our, just for point of comparison, the gentlemen in the front over there nodding their heads or taking notes, they are gentlemen from ICS who are waiting to hear some of those things, like take that hard look, and take those hard lines on deferred maintenance and such, and, and see what we can do as you engage people, as we engage people in those conversations, to see what does it really look like.
So specific to this board agenda item, what it is, is it's authorizing us to procure the services to move that project forward. So that is both in the more specific facility studies, those recommendations, the bond attorney that would be drafting up the language, work with the architect to help start, support that process, and then we also have to submit a review and comment to the Department of Education for any bond referendum project that we bring forward. And so it is kind of moving that path down, moving down that path towards the formal board authorization of those actions.
So, Madam Chair, I think with these clarifications, I would be happy to move the item as recommended, that we authorize the administration to begin procuring those services.
And for clarification, is that procuring the services, is that specific to the bond? The, the, the bond alone, or, or?
That would, that would include the facilities ask, because we've got a craft ballot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So more detailed specifics is needed to support that project at this point.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we have passed the authorization for services. We will move on to the memorandum of agreement with early childhood.
I'm sorry, can I ask, within the, within the back, within the board packet, it says further recommendation that the board authorize the administration to proceed with planning and preparation for development of an operating referendum proposal? Is that still an ask? Does that require as much lead time, as that, or, or is that something that we could firm up all at once?
The, the services for that regarding the bond attorney would be, I mean, we wouldn't necessarily need that specific authorization for this piece, but we are looking for is the guidance of saying, yes, we want to go both, both towards an operating referendum within the latitude of what the superintendent has suggested, as well as a bond referendum that is in the range that's been recommended coming from Peter Leatherman.
But I, I believe we just, the, the motion that, that, that just went through was specific to the facilities only, and the bonds only.
Correct. Those are the only services that we're requiring to, that we require the approval for tonight.
Right, so if, so what I'm, but we've left, we're leaving it silent for now on the, on the general?
I think we'd like some guidance.
Yeah, so we would also like to ask the board to ask, or to allow us to move forward with an operational bond referendum also into craft ballot language and, and follow up with that.
So I think the question is, do we need to make a motion for that, or do you have what you need from us from this conversation?
Mr. Holgi, what do you suggest?
We do not need a motion if the superintendent is comfortable with the, the perspective. If you were, if you were to recommend or make a motion supporting moving forward in an operating referendum, that affirms the administrative, administration's recommendation, there isn't a business action that's required of that, other than to align and know that the whole board supports that, and help initiate that planning.
Okay, so we, even if we did the, so the legwork needed to proceed a final approval of what it would look like on the ballot is not as involved as it is for the facilities?
No, that would probably be Mr. Holgi and I working with a ballot language consultant, just to clean up the ballot language.
So that can be done whether we, we move an item or not?
Yep. That formal language needs to be approved in August.
Correct. So just so I am comfortable, if we're not going to move this, I, as I understand, my guidance from the board as administration, following the guidance of our governance-based board, is to work towards approximately seven dollars for an average home operational referendum, and clarify ballot language to come back to this board in July for ideally recommendation and hopefully possible approval.
That was the spirit of my intent.
And one point of clarification, that is moving with the language that we have previously discussed, that would actually replace the existing language. So we would be clear that we're not simply just adding another operating referendum, but this would replace one that is currently.
It's called repeal and replace.
Yes, we, we'd repeal and replace, thus putting that entire fourteen.
Huge success.
Yes, yes, that would move that, that next referendum for that campaign out ten years.
Thank you.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Holgi, back to you, sir.
Am I up next, too?
You are up.
Oh, really?
Memorandum agreement for early childhood.
Okay, memorandum of agreement. I lost track of that one. So in Richfield schools, we, this current year implemented voluntary pre-kindergarten program as part of our partnership with Bloomington Public Schools for our community education programming. They actually hired most of those staff. Bringing those voluntary pre-kindergarten positions, as well as all early childhood positions in the district, we need to create a salary and benefits package for those individuals. VPK, or voluntary pre-kindergarten statute, requires that the teachers working in the VPK early childhood program are paid comparable salary and benefits with licensed teachers in the district. This memorandum of agreement is entered in, in the interim of not having a master agreement in place that includes those individuals with Education Richfield. Those individuals under Minnesota statute one-twenty-two-eight-forty are not afforded continuing contract rights. In other words, they do not have bumping or unrequested leave of absence rights, nor are they guaranteed a FTE or an amount of position for any given year. But we did want to align them in with our other teachers, since they are working in the same classrooms with special education teachers, since they're working in the same buildings with our kindergarten programs, and we believe not only for the spirit of voluntary pre-kindergarten programming, but really to honor the work that the voluntary pre-kindergarten teachers are doing, and we are requiring that they have a Minnesota teacher license, even though Minnesota statute does not require that, has caused us to develop this memorandum of agreement with Education Richfield, which seeks to identify which parts of that master agreement they are afforded the benefit of.
Craig, can I ask, so in the, in the year that we're, we're finishing up here, the, I'm sorry, last year, the, the pre-K program, or this year was run in conjunction with, with Bloomington, is that correct?
Correct.
And so the contract would be in the Bloomington, would be, would be under the Bloomington contract, is how?
Teachers for sixteen-seventeen were in Bloomington, they were hired by Bloomington, they were.
Within the contract, okay, that's, that's what I thought. And so is this, if someone is, is exactly the same person who moves over, is, is this a comparable shift for them, or, because when I look at the Bloomington contract, the, the rates that are within that contract seem very different from what we have for our K-12 salary structure.
Correct. This would be an increase from what they are currently afforded. In the Bloomington public schools, there has been work across the district to try to identify what does comparable salary and benefits mean, and so we've built it in with a true sense of what comparable is, and trying to tie in that into the salary and benefits piece specifically.
Would, would this memorandum, would this, would this shift represent a significant increase in cost end of the program? For example, this current year, we have, the, the staff is being paid under one salary structure, and it appears as though this, this would have a significant spike.
Because of the definition under state statute, we've been projecting the budget based on the fact that they would be paid similar salary and benefits, or comparable salary and benefits, as a fully licensed teacher. So there may be an increase in what the cost is for an individual, or what the salary is for an individual teacher, but we've accounted for that in the budget for current year and next year.
Do we have a sense for what the, like, percent change is overall?
I do not have that information right now.
Within our, within one of our pay grades, or pay rates, we have the program, the Wiggles and Giggles program, which is also a pre-K program? Is that, is that true?
That is a joint partnership with the city of Richfield.
Okay.
I don't believe that was intended to be included in this, because this is those teachers that we're requiring the teacher license for, and those individuals, those positions right now, I believe, do not require the teaching license for those positions.
If someone, okay, so it's, it's, then it's our insistence, so we, we are posting and insisting on a license, even though statute doesn't require it?
Correct.
But we don't do that for Wiggles and, the Wiggles and Giggles program?
Correct.
That's a joint venture? Okay, do we have a sense, I mean, this is hard for me, because when, within the program, we want to pay people properly for what they do, and the, and the credentials and, and skills that they deliver. But we don't, I mean, so is this an instance where we would be leading out and setting a beyond market rate for staff within this category?
We do not believe so. We believe most other districts that have the voluntary pre-kindergarten program are looking at aligning similar salary and benefits with their teacher schedule.
Okay, we believe they're looking at it, but we don't have any reason, we don't have any evidence to suggest that we, we would be leading out and the only ones doing so.
There are other districts, I haven't looked specifically at the contracts, there are other districts who have indicated that that is what they're doing in the new, in their new master agreement. Everybody receives the voluntary pre-kindergarten program for this current year. Everybody's teacher contracts are up for ratification and negotiations for this coming year, and so everybody's kind of in a similar boat, where they are entering into memorandum of agreements that are tying in where their salary and benefits are, and different districts are choosing to pursue that differently. I don't believe that we would be the only ones that would be in this area. We, there are other districts that have early childhood family education teachers, which is also in this group, that have those teachers specifically on the salary schedule, just like we're talking about here. So early childhood family ed teachers, which currently have been hired out of Bloomington too, are also included in this program. They don't have the continuing contract rights, but they are required under Minnesota statute to have a teaching license, and have an early childhood family education teacher license specifically.
No, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, that's all right.
Would there be implications to this, should the voluntary pre-K funding that we currently receive from the state go away after the next biennium, which I believe is what we have the money for at this point?
There are, not to be clear, but there are implications for any funding source that goes away for the district.
I mean, does it specifically relate to the, the contract?
Yeah. I, I don't anticipate that that would change that. I mean, with, where we have pathways and where we have voluntary pre-kindergarten program, all of that has been budgeted for in those areas for at least the next two years, I believe, and I think our voluntary pre-kindergarten program has been identified for continuation, for currently received voluntary. For currently received voluntary pre-kindergarten program, if we see, receive additional voluntary pre-K, then that sunsets at the end of the current legislative biennium. We would look at what our staffing ratios are, look at how we offer the program and adjust accordingly, and/or enter into a new agreement with Education Richfield that would afford that. Those are things that we can consider with more specifics, how we articulate that when we move into negotiations this current year. This really isn't meant to be a gap to kind of move into that so that we could hire teachers, have them have a sense of understanding of what their salary and benefits would be for next year, in the midst of multiple districts moving forth, trying to hire voluntary pre-kindergarten teachers specifically, or other early childhood teachers here before contracts are settled across the district, or across the metro area.
Question, Craig. Am I correct in understanding that some portion of community education is currently, some portion of that staff is currently covered under the Education Richfield master agreement? I know, I know that community ed has had staff participating in their negotiating team, and they appear to have had representation.
Community education has?
I'm thinking Terry Freeman, I guess, I didn't want to, sorry.
We have early, early childhood special education teachers, which are.
Really childhood special, a little different category.
So that's not a community education program, that's a general, like, special.
Got it, got it, okay, that clarifies for me, so thank you for that.
We did hire, I think, one or two teachers current, currently, just because our processes of wanting to hire those teachers individually for the voluntary pre-kindergarten program specifically, since we were receiving those funds in a general education formula, but most of our teachers have in early childhood school readiness, in early childhood family education, early childhood parent education, school readiness, and voluntary pre-kindergarten have been hired through the Bloomington program to date.
Yeah, I think I would also add that we did confirm that Bloomington is moving forward with their teachers, their early childhood teachers on teacher contract, and so they'll be bringing that forward with their overall teacher contract, and so while we don't have all districts across the metro, we do know that comparable is being interpreted as, we believe as we are, and certainly one of the more financially conservative districts of Bloomington has interpreted as such also.
Yeah, I mean, and I think we've talked a little bit about the cost side of this equation, I think it's important to recognize the benefits out of the equation.
Absolutely.
In terms of the work environment, and in terms of understanding the importance of this particular service that we're offering, and there's ample evidence that shows that every dollar you invest in pre-K programming pays off multiple times, you know, down the road, so I think we need to keep that in mind, that there's a lot of benefits to this as well, as well as just cultural benefits across, you know, that we're treating our employees as one, as one entity.
Can I just respond to that very quickly, I'm just gonna add on, I think from a just national perspective, there are also many states in which our early childhood teachers are significantly underpaid and do not have the rights that, you know, I personally believe should be afforded to them, so just speaking from Minnesota generally and some of the things we're talking about here as a district, I appreciate the way in which we're thinking really thoughtfully about what our early childhood preschool teachers deserve for their work.
And I think that that's a very important commentary as well. The other thing, just looking at the continuity of programming, this agreement specifically is for those positions that are teaching in early childhood where we require the Minnesota teaching license. So if we have positions that are early childhood that we don't require the Minnesota teaching license, then they are not afforded the same agreement, and so if our program changes or our staffing changes where we, voluntary pre-kindergarten goes away and we go back to school readiness, those requirements change because we aren't requiring that teacher license then, which voluntary pre-kindergarten strongly encourages that it be a fully licensed teacher, then that creates some different opportunities for us to change that staffing as well.
I'm just struggling to find the parallel to where they currently are to this and just to understand if this is a shift and if this is something, I know you'd said you'd built it into the cost, but I'm trying to follow along, I respect what people have said, and I definitely value their, everyone's contributions, it's just a question of, you know, we have, we have many, many positions within the district, and I consider them all important, yet they have at times radically different pay scales, and so it's not a question of the, of the value I have as in, for their individual contributions, but as a, for lack of a better term, the, the market scale is, if the market scale is established as a district, we have to have quite compelling reasons to deviate from it, in my opinion. And so even, even if it is ultimately a, a proper thing or the appropriate thing, the community probably, or this is a guess of mine, but prefers that people get paid what they're quote-unquote supposed to get paid based on the market scale for their services. And so I, I'm trying to, I'm scrolling through this other contract, and this, you know, it's hard to read, so.
And the biggest factor when we look at the market is requiring the Minnesota teaching license, and I think that's where we've aligned with believing that by requiring the Minnesota teaching license that market, whether that teacher is teaching first grade or second grade, or teaching pre-kindergarten, if we're requiring that same licensure requirement, that that is very similar, especially if that state statute is guiding that they have to receive comparable salary and benefits. It doesn't provide for, and we put our voluntary pre-kindergarten funding at risk, if the state determines that our staffing or our compensation is not comparable to a fully licensed teacher. Our best guess at what comparable means, means the same, absent certain benefits. And that is how MDE has guided that conversation and said comparable means comparable, or comparable means the same, and have pushed hard on the districts that have chosen to undervalue them compared to the rest of their teaching group. It doesn't necessarily mean that it has to follow exactly the same schedule, but it has to be within the range of salary and benefits. So that, that's how we've come up with this recommendation of wanting to have highly skilled individuals who have that opportunity to go to other districts and receive comparable or the same salary and benefits as other licensed teachers, and wanting those teachers to be serving Richfield students if possible.
So I'm gonna try to summarize and see if I've got, if I've got everything. What I'm hearing from you, Tim, is that you're feeling a little bit of discomfort with a sense that you don't quite understand where the market is and where we are relative to the market?
That's correct.
Okay, and then I think what I'm hearing from you, Craig, is you have some level of reassurance to us that we're somewhere near the market, although I'm also hearing from you that this is an evolving market?
Yeah.
That may be difficult to project right now.
Correct.
So my question then is, what sort of time constraints do we feel that we are under to take action on this item in order to give you the leeway and flexibility you need to initiate your hiring process? Are we under time constraints?
We are in the process of signing contracts with early childhood teachers to work in our voluntary pre-kindergarten program, those teachers oftentimes have offers from other districts, so the sooner that we're able to move on this, the more certain we are to be able to commit to what that salary and benefits are, the more certain we are to confirm that we have those individuals staffed within the district.
So the risks that we need to sort of think about balancing is the risk of not taking action tonight and potentially losing valued employees, as opposed to the risk of taking action tonight and potentially making that, potentially making it that we made an error in terms of how we judge the market?
And then having to go back and get determination from MDE, potentially different clarification.
Okay.
But every guidance that we've gotten that's come out of MDE is, it has to be within that salary range of what's currently offered.
I think what happens, because if you still have to pay the same, the comparable salary, but you're requiring less education, training, licensing, like, I don't think that pictures very well. And there is, the licensing for, for early education is really, especially and particularly to early childhood development, so it's more important than, than it may, you know, than it may appear, I mean, not more important than other licenses, but it's really critical, so it's not only about, so it has to do a lot of not only the academic, but also like the developing child, and also leading them where they are, and facilitating experiences that they may not be missing at home, so I think it's, it is a lot of work, and I think as a teacher, I like to know that if somebody's getting paid the same amount of money that I am getting paid, that they also had to go and get their license, and, you know, education beyond that, bachelor's degree, I just think it just makes sense, as a teacher. What if my teacher had?
Right, so does the existing population that's within the partnership with Bloomington require a license or not?
Existing, they are requiring the licensure internally.
Internally. So, okay.
What's changed is the determination from MDE regarding comparable salary and benefits with VPK. So that's been the transition that everybody was working towards after August, because it was just last August that everybody received the funding and those specific things were articulated as far as what that meant. So, but as Steve said, the indication is that Bloomington is changing their salary and benefits to align because of the pressure that MDE has received, has been giving them to determine what comparable is. Other districts, I believe Burnsville is another one that has moved to identify that that is also what comparable means, is within the same salary and benefits as their teachers, as their licensed teachers. So in that market is where there's been a lot of policing, there are other districts that have indicated to me either that they were moving that way specifically for this year, or even in this first year during the interim as well.
I also want to add that in my personal experience, my coworkers who have been hired like mid-August have not been often as effective as those who have been able to secure their placements earlier. I have many teachers who are friends who have been exes because of budgeting concerns, just like we have exes teachers, and they are on the, they are really looking, and it is really stressful for them to not know where they're going to be, I mean, you need to plan for the fall, and so.
I would agree with you on that timing, we've lived that timing, it's one of the, one of the, one of the things that Steve has implemented when he signed, when we hired him, correct, Steve? The idea of, of being in the hiring mode earlier in the calendar, then, so.
It definitely makes us more competitive for top talent, people who, you know, as we have increased from staff of color from five and a half percent to eight and a half percent, as we have increased the talent of our, of our overall staff, hiring early has been a vital, a vital addition to our practices, the earlier we are in position, the better we are, the better we are set up in the marketplace.
So, Madam Chair, if you are prepared, I have heard a lot of really good discussion, understanding that there are risks and benefits that we are balancing, I believe that the benefits of moving forward with the request to add this group to the MOA, am I on the right page?
Yes.
Okay, I believe that the benefits outweigh the risks, and so I'd be willing to move the motion as presented.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
The chair votes aye, and the motion passes. We will move on to the digital learning plan?
Just on, just on, this thing, you want to just? It's yours. Well, I gotta keep, I gotta present, did you get it? Do you have it, Eric?
So these next two are carryovers from last month's agenda, as, as they work to change the technology, obviously these were all set up for Mr. Patterness, and we obviously had to abandon, so I'm excited to hear about our digital learning plan, which will outline the, the next steps in utilizing our technology levy referendum funds to move forward in the utilization of technology to advance student learning, and then also sort of a safety net that we're working on with the West Metro Network Agreement to help save costs and also provide insurance to our organization should we find ourselves in a spot where we need additional partners to access funds for technology. Mr. Patterness?
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna go through the, a lot of these slides kind of briefly, they have been in the board packet for quite some time now. There is a lot of information, this proposal that's coming in front of you is a comprehensive package with a lot of work that's been in process for almost three years now, and I'm very excited about bringing this proposal forward tonight, because I think it's kind of getting to the pinnacle of, of the work when I came in, of what we did with infrastructure, and getting back to a question that Tim had earlier in the year about where have we gone with technology, what have we seen, and where are we going? This, this whole proposal will kind of encapsulate that around where we move with digital learning, the proposal around one-to-one and two-to-one devices, which is in our strategic plan, and what does that look like from a technical solution as well as an adaptive solution as to what the teachers are doing and how we're actually changing practice within the classroom. So as we start this work, it's all grounded within our mission and within the technology vision that was created at the same time we created our strategic plan, which is around innovate, connect, and growth through technology, with a supporting statement of technology will support the personal success for all members of Richfield Public Schools. So in our strategic planning process, what you're gonna see in this comprehensive plan tonight hit three strategic plan areas, K through 12 digital media curriculum, standard technology K-12, and provide increased mobile device resources, with a one-to-one student ratio 612, two-to-one student ratio pre-K through five. So a quick history on our technology and what we have capitalized on with our technology referendum that have led, that has led to tonight's proposal. So in Centennial, we launched a one-to-one iPad program in 2013, Chromebooks and RMS and RHS 2014, infrastructure overhaul in the summer of 2015, Chromebook expansion in all buildings in 2015, again, Chromebook expansion again, you'll see again in this previous year, base technology was identified in 2015, K-12 digital media literacy standards were developed in 2015, and K-12 digital media and literacy curriculum is being developed right now this current year. So all of these things have led to setting the foundations and the groundwork for actually implementing a successful digital learning model and a one-to-one and two-to-one implementation as we start going through this. Through that one-to-one iPad pilot program in 2013, that really helped to lay some of the groundwork of identifying infrastructure and some of the challenges of actually running one-to-one programs, which led to us overhauling the infrastructure and developing plans as you see forth. So if we talk about digital learning, we go back to the question of why digital learning? So we want to prepare students for today's and tomorrow's careers, and the other guiding focus is providing teachers with the tools to provide engaging and relevant learning opportunities for our students, as well as anytime, anywhere learning. I'm gonna skip the video, but the video is posted on our website, and if you haven't seen it, we did some interviews with some students on what technology has done for them and their learning over this past year, and there's a great representation at elementary through high school of some of the innovative things that we're doing right now. So the Technology Steering Committee came together and we kind of focused on what do we want as a comprehensive package? So what you will see in this presentation as we go through here, again, the results are branding of a digital learning model, a communication plan and program to staff, students, and parents, what does professional development training look like for staff, it has to be aligned to the SAMR model and FORC's, clear expectations for students, staff, and parents, with staff expectations land to the, aligned to the Danielson framework, which we use for evaluation. So if we talk about adaptive solution, the branding piece that we came up with this digital learning model is hashtag enrich, so if you look at districts that have really successfully done a one-to-one implementation with digital learning model, there is some form of a brand with it, something that the, the community, the parents, the staff can all rally behind, and looking at tagging this in with social media, because if we use Twitter as a professional learning network for teachers, or for our students, this is a way that we can brand what we're doing with our digital learning and tag that with representation throughout the community. When they came up with this, they wanted the R and the rich in there to represent Richfield, and when we talk about the N part in the beginning, it's about engaging learning, it's about enriching learning. about enriching learning, and it's about enhancing learning. So if we talk about learning targets and, and measurement strategies, so one of the common areas that we go to when we implement any form of change within schools is really looking at achievement, but I think digital learning and, and our one-to-one initiative and two-to-one initiative is, is broader than just looking at student achievement. Um, and so where you're going to see these framed around is really the four Cs and our, um, our vision with technology. So if we talk about innovation within our technology, the areas or the learning targets and the measurement areas that you're going to see is around students' ability to be creative and to develop critical thinking. When we look at our vision around connection, this is really a lot about communication and looking at the four Cs, the two Cs being communication and collaboration and developing those skills. These are really the core, um, four soft skills that we develop in students to actually make them successful and when you bring in a lot of business leaders nowadays, they tell you that they can teach a lot of the technical skills, but what they want to see in an incoming employee is how to critically think, how to communicate, how to collaborate, how to be creative in that job space because computer systems change, operations change, they can teach those technical pieces and what they're really looking for are those core identified, um, values within students with that skill set. And then of course, when we talk about growth, the other measurement mechanism and learning target is going to be around achievement. Now if we talk about the first, um, four areas, we actually laid out baseline measurements. So when you took the community parent survey this year, you would have saw that there was a whole section on digital learning. Those questions were intentionally framed as parent and student, um, survey questions to, to, uh, get the feedback and gather the data around their students' interaction with creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. We also asked those similar questions in the staff survey to gain baseline data around creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. So as we continue to develop and launch this model, those same questions can be used year after year to see how we're actually developing those skills for teachers to develop that skill set in students and if students are actually translating that, that skill set as well. Achievement data will definitely continue to be measured around MAP growth, MCA growth, and other achievement mechanisms that we use within, within our district. We talk about student framework, um, and I'm just going to, what you see here is an infographic around baseline technologies that students use. So Google Apps for Education or G Suite as it's called now is our, is one of our core tools that we use, um, as well as Google Classroom, Gmail, and Synergy. There are many other tools that two teachers are using, Edmodo, um, GoAnimate, Adobe Suite, Adobe products, um, there's just a lot of variety of different tools, but the tools that we know every student is interacting with every day are these cores. So if we talk about communication, students are interacting with Google Classroom, Gmail, and Synergy to communicate with their teachers and with each other, um, around academics and learning. Collaboration, G Suite and Google Classroom they're using on a daily basis. Creativity, students are using the G Suite tools to create products every day to demonstrate their knowledge and critical thinking we're using through Google Classroom and G Suite applications. To give you some quick data on that, on an average day in our school system between students and staff, there's an average of twenty-seven, almost twenty-eight thousand emails received and about twenty-four thou, twenty-four hundred emails sent on a daily basis. In our Google Classroom, which is our, um, adopted learning management, um, learning management system, um, is an average of two hundred and twenty-three active classrooms on a daily basis that students are interacting in. In G Suite, we have almost ten thousand drawings that have been created, uh, five thousand Google Forms that have been created, forty-three thousand Google Slides, twenty-seven thousand Google Sheets, two hundred and sixty-one thousand Google Documents, and this is the one that captivates my mind, um, about three hundred and thirty-nine thousand other files. So these are files that students are creating in other software systems and storing them within the Google application like they're, like a thumb drive. So this is the interaction of the technologies that students are using. We don't have any, um, concrete data yet on how much students have interacted within Synergy, but we do know that they're using it on a regular basis as I get help desk requests and see things funnel in from parents and students and getting accounts set up. Um, primarily we see more secondary students and families interacting with Synergy than we see at the primary grades and that's already part of consideration on, um, what we're doing on welcome back nights and some other parent information sys, um, sessions at the elementary level to, to look at the Synergy system and how that turns into a, a better communications tool for parents and families around academic information. On the instructional side, again, technology is just a tool and an instrument, so the three areas that we're going to, um, coordinate all our professional development around is again around the Danielson model of evaluation, the SAMR model of, and of, uh, technology integration, and those four Cs, the creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. Where you get the greatest impact and start to see the impact of achievement is when you mesh all three of these together to get to the core of, um, transformational instructional practice within the classroom. Implementing technology for just implementing technology is not going to make change in the classroom and you're not going to see academic achievement. It really comes when students and staff start to get all those components put together and the transformation happens on instructional approach, which, um, drives that change in the learning process. Um, I'm going to, these next two slides are around SAMR model and the four Cs if you want some more information around that. I'm not going to go real in-depth. I know I've brought that model up a few times at different board presentations. The four Cs are probably the newer piece component that, um, I haven't maybe presented with you before, really around that creativity, critical thinking, communication, and collaboration. This really came out of the partnership of Twenty First Century Learning, which has a lot of research behind it and actually a lot of resources behind that for teachers to support them in, in implementing and developing the, these skills within, with their students. So getting into the expectations that we talked about and results, um, so you'll see here with student expectations, um, again, using their device for educational purposes, arrive to school each day with their devices fully charged, um, keep their device in protective cases while transporting, um, do not eat or drink when your device is open, uh, keep your, like, device clean and fully functional, uh, you'll be responsible for damages to your device. Um, again, some of the instructional models that we have around lowering your device into a listening position, the high school has implemented a red, yellow, green light protocol that the middle school is actually looking at implementing next year on what, what do we do with our device when we're in our classroom? Again, it's about that communication and classroom management and how to effectively utilize, um, technologies within the classrooms. Again, around digital citizenship and creating their footprint and what their footprint looks like, um, and return your device to the media center at the end of each school year. Parent guardian responsibilities. Um, and so again, staff ex, student expectations and we talk about parent expectations, a lot of this is really in alignment with what we already have in our acceptable use policy. It's just kind of more clearly defining these and putting these in a, a, um, parent-friendly language or a student-friendly language as opposed to policy language. Parents and guardians are responsible for students' device in the event of damage, loss, or neglect. Outside of school, parents, guardians are responsible to monitor the usage of your students' device for safety and compliance to student device expectations. Parents, guardians are responsible to update contact information, phone, email address, um, by contacting building secretaries, and parents, guardians are responsible to monitor students' grades and coursework using Synergy Parent View. And you'll see kind of a parallel with the Synergy piece when we get into the teacher expectations, really driving Synergy as that primary academic communication tool about what assignments and things are due and what are my grades and how are my students doing So if we get onto the teacher expectation side, um, they will model and teach students how to use and care for devices, teach and model, encourage good digital citizenship, communicate and monitor student device expectations, uh, send students with unusable devices to the media center. We're developing media centers as the technology hub within the schools for support. Um, integrate technology into curriculum per district guidelines, actively participate in professional development around technology, um, respond to parent communications within two school days, and seek out technology help when needed. So some of the additional ones specifically around Synergy and we're, um, trying to get some tighter timelines on here and that will come before we start the school year, but Synergy expectations K through five, you will use, utilize Synergy to post academic information for families. So there is family websites within Synergy, there's a communication tool within Synergy that they can send out messages and notifications to families through there. So again, training and supporting the elementary staff on how to effectively use that tool for an academic communication tool. Um, but specifically when we get to six twelve and looking at the grade book and how we utilize that, um, you will create assignments in Synergy on a regular basis, so we do want to get to a definition on what regular basis is and I've been having some conversations with Ed Richfield and conversations with our District Technology Advisory Committee and Tech Steering Committee on what we define that as. Is it daily? Is it weekly? Is it every other day? Is it as assignments are assigned? So that will be tightened up by the time we launch in the fall. Um, and you will update grades to current on a regular basis. So one thing is getting the assignment in the grade book so parents can go in there and know what is due for students. The other is, once it's graded, getting that information into the grade book on a timely manner that parents can actually get that, that feedback, um, and communication. Google Classroom expectations, Google Classroom is, um, what we call our learning management system or our content delivery system. So if teachers are going to develop digital content and deliver it to students, Google Classroom is the tool that we want them to use. Um, there are a lot of platforms out there right now and one of the challenges we've worked on for several years is a student could go at the middle school and have Edmodo for one class, Schoology for another class, Google Classroom for another class, Moodle for another class, and another tool for another class. And so throughout the day, they have to navigate through five different content delivery platforms in order to understand and navigate what's going on in digital learning. This offers one avenue that students will learn, get real successful at. We can also provide a lot of supports to staff to be very effective at delivering digital content through that method and so that students can more easily navigate and break down the barriers and teachers can be more successful in how they're actually delivering digital content to students. Technical solution, there was a sheet in the, in the board packet kind of outlining how we would accomplish a one-to-one ratio and two-to-one ratio over multiple years. If we look at the process that we used to do this, uh, we did survey collection to staff, parents, input from administrators, input from, uh, building tech teams. Tech Steering Committee developed multiple models, input was gathered on those models and brought to the leadership, building leadership and the district tech advisory committee, and then Tech Steering Committee landed on a final model recommendation. Um, so again, considerations when you look at this are presented here, but again, really around sustainability. Um, the idea that, um, three through twelve would be some kind of keyboard-based tool in, in order to, to promote and develop the word processing skills that they need and E through two, so E being preschool, um, would be tablet-based. So in the proposal, you'll see that iPads are the tool that's identified. We actually wouldn't be looking at purchasing any tablets for about two years yet. Um, and so with the ever-changing technology market, that tablet may not be an iPad and I would say over time, the technology costs of these devices continue to drive downwards. So it's an estimate based, of cost based on current market value and the technology we would probably utilize, knowing that that's probably going to change and decrease over time. Um, so if we look at device solutions and two, two-to-one, uh, environment pre-K through twelve or pre-K through five, excuse me, one-to-one at six through twelve, um, pre-K through two tablet-based, three through twelve keyboard-based, we're identifying Chromebooks as the most effective tool for that. Pre-K through five would be cart-based with devices staying in school. So, um, Centennial had fourth and fifth grade one-to-one, those devices would no longer be going home. That's our, actually already in the plan for next year. Um, we're going to keep all devices in-house at the elementary level, develop the technical skills on how to use it and how to, to, to use it as a learning tool, um, and get the students engaged in it. And then in sixth grade would be where they actually launch in, in a one-to-one model. The other piece, looking at a two-to-one ratio is very intentional. Looking at screen time, I know one of the concerns a lot of families have is that when you implement a digital learning model or devices, that screen time is going to drastically increase. That, that I would say is a myth and many school districts that you walk into that have implemented these models would also contest that that is a myth. Um, I would say that your screen time that you see at the elementary school is probably going to be about the same. The challenge we have right now is teachers are always fighting to get to the resources to do the things they need. We also have, there's a lot of research around, in particular at the elementary level, that we want to balance that screen time out. In particular, when we talk about students learning to read, it's vital that students learn to read in an actual physical text because printed text actually has three dimensions on it and your eye needs to learn how to adjust to that. Learning on your screen, your eye adjusts very differently because it's a fat, flat screen and it doesn't have that three-dimensional depth perception that students need when they're learning to read at early grades. So at elementary, it's about a healthy balance within that. Um, even when you get into middle school, where we've got classrooms that are in a one-to-one representative model, they use the technology when it's appropriate. So you will walk in there and you will see students maybe doing a formative assessment at the very beginning for a teacher to get some quick data. Then they might have some very structured whole group time where the teacher's delivering some, some content to the student, they're not using a device at that time. Then they might turn their device back on to do some collaboration in a Google Doc. Teacher might regroup them, have them close the device and deliver some other content. So within any given period, even in a one-to-one situation, devices are not used from beginning of bell to end of bell. It's a very balanced approach to what's, what's, um, teachers are doing to best meet the instructional needs within that classroom. Again, in six through twelve, when we talk about one-to-one devices, those devices will be going home and they will actually be assigned to the student. So if we talk specifically the one-to-one solution in seventeen eighteen, um, we would start with one-to-one implementation at sixth grade. We'd add additional devices at the RHS on carts for them to continue their preparation and understanding how to utilize digital technology and digital learning. Um, in eighteen nineteen, we would complete one-to-one implementation at six through eight, then we would add additional devices at the high school, again, to expand the, the teacher's access to technology and build their skill set. Um, in nineteen twenty, we would continue one-to-one six, eight, we would add devices at nine and ten, and then twenty twenty-one, um, we would continue with six, ten, and add the remaining devices. So by twenty twenty-one, we would have our one-to-one ratio. Some of the key things to understand on why we picked middle school, so middle school's been very advanced in the amount of devices that they've been putting in and the engagement that they've been doing with digital learning process. Um, so they have a significant higher proportion of digital devices within their building and teachers have engaged in the process for a lot longer than the high school. The other consideration is knowing with seventh period day coming next year, just how much can staff reasonably take on to be successful? And so what, what we felt was necessary is that's, the, the staff at the high school really need to get the model of the seventh period day and those instructional courses down, knowing that the technology is going to come to enhance and support what they're doing in the very near future. If we talk two-to-one solution, pre-K through five, um, uh, there's going to be some slight changes to what we've been doing the last two years, but device allotment will be provided annually to elementary schools and then distributed based on building plans. So if you recall in the last two years when I've done presentations, we've said we're going to roll out devices to fifth grade, put them in the classrooms, then last year we rolled, or this year we rolled them out to fourth grade and put them in classrooms. Um, what we decided to best meet the needs of the elementary schools is we continue with continued allotment of devices and then work with the individual buildings to decide what is the best approach for how we want to distribute these devices. So if a building wants to create a one-to-one mock scenario in fourth and fifth grade and then have cart-based checkout for the lower grades, they can do that based on what they feel is best for programming needs with, within their building. I think in particular with STEM, depending on the STEM, um, programming that's going on with that building, they may have different needs to rearrange that technology to meet the different units when I think about inside-out, um, that they're doing in the partnership with U of M in the mail. They do some very specific things with Chromebooks that different grades may need more technology access than others. So seventeen eighteen, we would distribute a hundred and twenty across all buildings. Eighteen nineteen, another hundred and twenty. Nineteen twenty, we would jump it up to one sixty. Twenty twenty-one, which by the way, you'll see a green marker in the, the distribution sheet, that green marker indicates when our, uh, infrastructure lease project is over. So we've got three years left of that and then there's roughly seven hundred thousand dollars that are going to free up to help support the ongoing sustainability of this. And so at twenty twenty-one, you're going to see we're going to jump up to three hundred and twenty devices, um, to really finish pushing the last of the two-to-one ratio and twenty-one twenty-two is when we hit two-to-one ratio at the elementary levels. So again, if we talk about the technical solution costs, it'd be funded and sustained through the technology level. Um, we looked at, uh, annual costs and sustainability. We've talked about refresh models built in. So for devices going home, and this is pretty standard throughout the, the, um, districts that I've talked to that are doing one-to-one Chromebooks, three years on a device going home is about the max it can take based on the beating that it takes and also battery life. Um, they've, we've, some of them have tried to push it to four but are realizing now that they're hitting year three, that they're not going to be able to sustain four years in that model. Devices staying at home in carts will run about four years. We actually have some devices that are going on a fourth-year leg that are, um, they're going to make it. So as we talk about the refresh model, um, what we're So as we talk about the refresh model, what we're going to do is functioning devices will be slated for recycling, but if they work, they're going to be repurposed. So they're going to be put in carts so that they can be, go down to the elementary school in carts, but with a note on them that if it breaks, if it goes bad, this one isn't for replacement, where it's just going to go to the recycler. The other piece that it's going to be repurposed is we're always going to have a set of devices at the middle school and the high school in case a kid forgets it, their Chromebook isn't charged, their device got broken, it's out for repair. So one of the things we don't want to have is a student without a device because all the curriculum and content is being delivered through there. So if a device is broken, they'll turn it in, they'll get a loaner, which we can use these fourth-year devices that are ready to be recycled for those purposes. Two hundred thousand dollars roughly for the first three years. Currently, we are using, spending about a hundred thousand dollars a year on the devices that we've been implementing so far. And then after starting year four, we're talking about a three hundred thousand dollar annual cost just under that to continue the sustainability of this program, which through the technology levy could be supported. Year four is also the end of the infrastructure financing. The other piece that we want to talk about is user fee recommendations. So the next slide will actually kind of talk about what some other districts are doing. So it is recommended that we are going to, would move forward with a user fee. Personal learning programs come with costs beyond technology itself. So if we talk about having a warranty, there are things that aren't covered by warranty. Students lose chargers. We had an incident where a student got sick on top of his Chromebook this year. The company came back and said warranty wouldn't cover that. I would personally feel bad going to a family and saying, "We need three hundred dollars for this Chromebook that got damaged." So looking at building in that kind of hidden cost buffer in there, this is how we would do that, is by collecting that user fee. It also provides some investment on the student's side to have some skin in the game, that this isn't like your standard textbook that you just get, and you need to have some responsibility within that. So if we look at some of this, Centennial has currently had a user fee for the last four years on their program, and it's been at, what was it, at seventy-five dollars a year per user? And then they broke it down in the percentage based on what we do in athletics. So if we talk about a free and reduced-price lunch student on the athletics proportion, a student would be paying about twenty-five dollars a year within that proportion. What we're recommending is a thirty-dollar one-time user fee at the middle school and then a one-time user fee at the high school. So sixty dollars total over your six-through-12 career. If we wanted to look at it in sort of a payment plan, it would be ten dollars per year up through eleventh grade, then you would be complete. This again would cover the cost of lots of lost parts up to a limit. If a student is chronically losing their charger, then we need to have another conversation about what's happening. But for most incidentals, that will help cover the cost and cover the cost of damages not covered by warranty.
Anthony, sorry. The fee, you just mentioned the fee, and you mentioned Centennial had a program that modeled after the athletics department perhaps, so reflected free and reduced lunch. Would the fee you're proposing have similar?
So no, we're thinking a thirty-dollar flat fee across, rather than having a high fee and then doing it proportional based on free and reduced-priced lunch. And if we talk about some of the logistics on that, it becomes easier on a collection standpoint to have that flat fee. Also, if I show you, when I get to the next slide and kind of show you what our neighboring districts that are implementing one-to-one programs are doing, you'll see a flat fee is actually pretty common amongst a lot of districts. And if it's not, their tiered rate is actually charging more on an every-year basis for students. So grand total actually becomes a lot more than just doing one flat fee at middle school and then one flat fee at high school. So if we look at some other districts that have one-to-one implementation programs, and again, I've got the free and reduced-priced lunch percentage in there. St. Cloud Public Schools, they have a fifty-eight percent free and reduced-priced lunch, actually very similar demographics to us, but a much larger district. It's twenty-five dollars per year, per student, for a non-FRP student, ten dollars per year for a reduced student, and then five dollars for a free student per year. So their free end actually comes in a little lower than if we probably do a flat fee. Forest Lake, they have a twenty-two percent free and reduced-priced lunch rate. They do a forty-dollar user fee, flat. Then on the second repair, charge a hundred dollars, flat. And then on a third repair, they charge the full cost. Free and reduced-priced lunches are free. Cloquet Public Schools, fifty-six percent free and reduced-priced lunch. They do a forty-dollar one-time fee with an eighty-dollar family max. Edina Public Schools does a flat fee of twenty dollars per incident. So every time you have any kind of damage, they just charge you twenty dollars. Robbinsdale Public Schools has a sliding scale fee, fifty-two percent free and reduced-priced lunch. They do thirty-seven dollars per year, and if your free or reduced-priced lunch is twenty-two dollars per year. Bloomington Public Schools, our neighbors to the south, forty-two percent free and reduced-priced lunch. They do a cost per incident on a sliding scale of zero, twenty-five, and fifty, plus a district-funded hundred dollars per device. So they are actually putting in a side pod, a hundred dollars per device to cover. And then what they do is, your first incident is covered, twenty-five dollars on the next incident, fifty dollars on your next incident. So that's how they are running their fee schedule. So you'll notice that districts are all taking different variations on what this would look like and how they would move forward with that. So with that being said, last piece is the communication plan, which you guys have seen and have that presented to you. And then I will turn it over for questions.
I would add on the user fee part that there was a lot of discussion with the D-Tech group about that user fee, and there was a lot of back and forth. Since we have this technology levy, why are we asking for a fee? Shouldn't that all be included in that? And as you said, I mean, it really was the investment in the families and the students in the individual device. And the group overall really felt that that flat user fee, the thirty dollars for three years in a school, was very reasonable, and they were very positive about it, but there was a lot of discussion back and forth.
Several of the districts I listed also have technology levies attached to them as well. So this isn't a unique situation either.
No, I'm sure it is not. It's just, you know, we have to be prepared that it's an additional fee and that it might create hardship for some, and that it's quite, you know, we have to be prepared when people don't pay it.
Yep.
I'm also concerned about the thirty dollars, once in the middle school, once in the high school, and specifically knowing that we have a population of students that are highly mobile and are coming in and out of our district. And so to me, the ten dollars per year feels much more, I would say, both manageable and something that feels better aligned to the needs of our families in terms of thinking about things on a year-by-year basis, instead of asking people to pay thirty dollars upfront for something that is three or four years in length.
That was a bill, that was one of the options, correct?
Yes. So we kind of talked thirty dollars overall at the middle school and thirty dollars overall at the high school, but could look at breaking that up into a ten dollar per year.
We're making it an option. Someone wanted to do one of them.
Yep.
Do we have a sense for how functional Chromebooks are in the absence of internet connection?
Yes, so that is one thing that we would address right away and work with the teachers. So Chromebooks do work in offline mode. So it'd just be a matter of working with the students to show them how to download your content before you leave from the school day. And then Chromebooks are very adept at syncing back up as soon as they get to an internet connection and loading everything back up into the cloud.
And somewhere in here, you'd mentioned protecting, you know, that the students will have a protective case on it. Is that provided, or is that something that?
Yes, that would be provided as well.
Another thing that I thought of as we went through this with the proliferation of Chromebooks, or as we go through, a year or so ago, we were talking about replacement laptops for staff. Will they be transitioning their technology to Chromebooks to mirror what's being used by everyone else in the building?
Yep, so we're not at a point to transition staff over to Chromebooks yet. Again, one of the big hindrance pieces is interactive software. So they can't use the smartboards with a Chromebook. So, you know, I think long-term, we'll look as technology continues to advance that when we look at in five years of starting to replace the teachers, that will be a strong part of the conversation.
I would say, this is a really great example of a time when we could use this information and get this out to the public about what we have done with the technology money, because it really does kind of show everything in the planning and the careful use of all of those dollars. So this is a great presentation. I know it was long, but it was, I think we all needed to see it, and I think we need to share this type of thing with the public.
I also just really appreciate, and I know we moved more quickly over some of the slides that are about the sort of content and experience, but that technology is not the end. Technology is the means to the end with respect to student learning and really deep, meaningful engagement. And I think as much as we talk about the technology, we also need to emphasize the technology in and of itself is not the answer here.
Yeah, if there's no more comment, I will move the plan as presented.
I'll second.
Here's a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Ms. Baraki. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the digital learning plan is passed. And we will move on to the West Metro Network Agreement, and Mr. Patton is again.
Yes, so as Mr. Yunisky pointed out earlier, part of this work is a conversation we started earlier when we looked at changing our internet service provider. One of the things that changed by us moving away from ties and going more independently on what we're doing with our internet services, it took us away from our ability to receive Equity Aid because you need to be a part of a telecommunications cluster or joint powers group in order to receive the Minnesota Equity Aid with telecommunications. That's put several districts in the same scenario, and so there's kind of a unique opportunity in partnership with the West Metro School Districts. And so initially, we started having conversations and collaborating about how we could potentially pool our collective expertise together to create some form of joint powers agreements for the means of receiving that Equity Aid. We're also in another unique situation of looking at a potential collaboration of the West Metro Districts by the actual fiber networks that we own. So Richfield Public Schools owns a wide-area fiber network that connects to Bloomington and Edina. Edina actually owns their own fiber network that connects to Hopkins and St. Louis Park. Hopkins owns their own that connects to Eden Prairie and St. Louis Park. Eden Prairie also owns their own that connects to multiple school districts. So we all have this interconnectivity of fiber that we all jointly own that provides some unique opportunities for us in the future, talking about internet services and telecommunications. And one of the earlier, one of the earliest opportunities that Edina and our district has embarked in is we actually have disaster recovery sites located at each of our locations. So if Richfield High School blew up, we actually have the ability to spin up our servers over in Edina and have our website come back up and our access to our cloud content. Likewise, Edina has the same thing here within our basement. And so we also know the reality of the flavor of, in everybody's mouth, around joint powers agreements and collaboratives and the direction that those are going. So we were very cautious and did a lot of investigation on what this actually looks like in terms of joining, and actually, if we choose to want to leave the joint powers agreement as well, some easy opportunities for us. So it's basically a zero-cost entry to get in. Where there will potentially be minimal fees is as we file for Equity Aid, we have to have an audit done on that Equity Aid every year, and if we have someone supporting our districts and filing the Equity Aid, which is a pretty minimal fee, probably under five hundred dollars total for all the districts to receive those services. Additional costs may come in if school districts within that joint powers agreement decide to do some collaboration and jointly purchase some equipment within that collaboration. But as defined within that agreement, that would be parsed out based on when you move, what was your investment that you put in that you would be responsible on leaving. So tonight, we're looking for a resolution to move forward with the joint powers agreement with the West Metro telecommunications cluster. This is necessary to be a part of before July one in order for us to receive Equity Aid next year.
Anthony, can you speak briefly to any, if any, impact this has on our membership and ties?
This has no impact on our membership and ties at the moment. It does provide us with some safeguards and opportunities if things change with the relationship and ties. And one of those being, right now, as we're talking about Equity Aid, leaving ties internet services, we can't receive Equity Aid. This communications cluster provides us with the opportunity to get that. And that, so if we talk about what we get from Equity Aid, so E-Rate covers about eighty percent of our internet costs right now. Equity Aid covers forty percent of the remaining costs. So it brings our internet costs to cover the whole district to roughly four thousand dollars a year.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm looking, this is a resolution. I will move the resolution as presented to join the West Metro Network collaboration.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Ms. Baraki, a second by Mr. Ashmead. This is a resolution, so we will pull the board. Ms. Cole?
Aye.
Mr. Tensing?
Aye.
Mr. Ashmead?
Aye.
Ms. Baraki?
Aye.
Mr. Paulus?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, and the resolution passes. We will move on to the PSEO options, and Mr. Holt, again.
Yeah, the next item is simply a renewal of a contract with Normandale Community College. We initiated an agreement similar to this, or actually the same agreement last year, that provides for Richfield students who are attending Normandale either full-time or part-time on a PSEO agreement, are actually enrolled in Richfield schools. We pay the tuition credit to Normandale specifically for that. And so this is, was approved last July, I believe it was, and we're asking for that approval again this year for the coming year.
Greg, are there any material changes year over year?
It's the same agreement, same reach. Everything else is the same.
I will move the contract as presented.
I'll second.
There was a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Paulus. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the resolution passes.
Thank you.
No, that wasn't a resolution, sorry. The motion passes. So we move on to 2017, 2018 school board meeting dates.
All right, so as we look at the meeting dates, we are on our regular first and third Mondays, except for when there is a holiday. To alter those dates, a couple of things to review, and we can look to June later. But August of this year, we did have a request for a joint study session with the Richfield City Council. So we have a couple of options. We can keep our regular meeting date on the seventh, or we could have a meeting to align to the study session that they're requesting on the eighth. And so they have typically come to our meeting, and they're requesting that we now reciprocate. And so they've asked us to attend on the eighth. So the question then is, do we keep our regular board meeting on the seventh, or do we move that to the eighth also? In which case, we could have it at the municipal center, or we could have it here.
The Tuesday, the eighth, is that a date for a regular city council meeting?
Yes, it is.
So we would be occupying a different space presumably, but yeah.
Yes, if we remain there, we would host and then have it hosted at the site. I believe the Bartholomew, Bartholomew Room in the back is a good location for us to work with them and partner if we wanted to. And so we could also look at that as an option at this time and investigate to make sure that that would work, and people could investigate calendars. We could certainly change that or work on that in the meanwhile.
Because the other option is to keep our meeting on the seventh and then just do like a study session before.
Correct.
Correct, before their meeting at the municipal center.
Correct.
If we can meet there, I prefer you seven, one night rather than two.
I understand how that rationale.
I think my, I think we should just do a more-than-usual effort. I'm sorry, I'm starting to lose my words for the few of you that are still in the audience. Be really cognizant of how to publicize that our meeting is not taking place on a Monday and is not taking place here at the high school slash district office, so that people are aware of where we will be and why we will be there.
So I will investigate that. meeting in August. And then similarly, as we look towards 2018, if we're looking for the marathon June session, we also may be looking to switch up and do two in June, to try not to have that four-plus-hour situation, if at all possible.
I think especially in August with the referendum and all of the other things gearing up for the start of school, it makes a lot of sense to me to have two August meetings.
I would agree. One other note, November, I believe, Monday, November 6, is, is that the, that's the night before the election, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
I believe in someone, Peter, I'm looking at Peter and John, have we historically moved that one? It creates an odd situation if anyone was running, or creates conflict where someone might choose to be absent if they were a candidate. I believe, I believe two years ago, two years ago, did we move that to not be that evening?
Right. So, there's a couple of potential concerns. One would be the need to canvass the election, and whether we would want to meet essentially after the polls have closed. We have done that in the past, to meet after the polls have closed on the night of the election, in order to perform our function as a canvassing board. So I guess that's one consideration. And then I think, Tim, your other consideration is at that point.
So it sounds more likely to me that we should hold off on voting on this, and we can bring this back in July. It looks like, informally, I'm hearing that August 8 publicized well seems like a logical situation, so we do that in one night. And then we will look at the second meeting in August, and then we'll also examine November and some other options, which again, we can always revisit these in the future, but we'll definitely do that at that point.
But we're full-go for July 17.
We are full-go for July 17, yes.
Thank you.
Exciting things.
Okay.
Leaving us to donations.
Donations.
All right. Scrolling down. Three donations totaling $593 were donated to the Spartan Food Shelf in May, $250 from anonymous, $275 to Richfield United Methodist Church, and $8.91 GoFundMe account via WePay. Additionally, the Benevity Fund donated $361.21 to the Random Acts of Kindness Fund. So thank you to our generous donors.
Commander, I'm sure I will move that we accept these donations with gratitude.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion by Mr. Tensing, a second by Mr. Ashmead. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and the motion passes. So we move on to advanced planning and legislative updates.
I believe we updated the board last time. The two-and-two proposal has gone through the legislature, which looks like about 1.7% in the first year, and approximately 3.2 total package to Richfield, is around what the runs look like. And so while it is two-and-two, it doesn't look like, as funds break out, that it lands for us quite at two-and-two, but overall, that is solid from where the legislature started. Similarly, as a reminder, VPK funds came, and we're also anticipating expansion for Richfield Public Schools. I'm so excited about that. And then we are waiting to see if there will be a special session, or if there will be other things that they call people back for, because obviously, there is still some tension at the Capitol, so we don't know exactly what's going to happen in that regard, but we're monitoring very closely, and we'll provide an additional update in July.
Okay, so we can move on to information and questions from the board.
Do we teach cursive handwriting?
Very good, I think.
And all my people who had had that answer just laughed.
Right. My understanding, my, my experience...
We taught it when my kids were young.
Yeah, I can share my experience, John, that there is sort of a teacher-dependent interest in teaching cursive, but it is not necessarily a requirement or aligned item throughout, at least the K-5 buildings, in my experience as a parent.
I think my daughter tried to teach herself. She's just finished fifth grade, so I don't think it's, it's not a, if you're asking if it's district-wide, it is certainly not.
So if a grandma approaches me on the street and says, "My child can't read cursive handwriting, she throws my cars away," what's going on? I'll say, "We don't teach it?"
Let me just double-check officially, to make sure, and I'll figure out. I don't believe it's technically in the state standards and curriculum anymore.
Oh, really? That's not part of the standard.
But yes, I'll absolutely go take a look, and how about if I report back for sure in July, and I will give an exact answer at that point.
There's definitely exposure, at minimum. They do see it. I don't know how much competence they require.
Tablet, anecdotal.
That's the point. Is this, that's your other recommendation to the grandma, is your grandchild got a tablet? There are some apps out there.
I had two things that I wanted to share, promise to be brief. I think first, the war of attrition means there are very few people left at 10:41 PM, but I did want to thank those that are still here, and anybody who might be watching this after the fact. Just all of those who have gotten in touch, I know, with me as an individual board member, and I assume that the same is true for other board members here, to voice support or to have direct conversations with us about questions and concerns over the last month. I appreciate hearing from people individually and being able to have those conversations, and I hope that they can continue, so just wanted to appreciate that publicly. The second thing, I know I've shared updates before about the Every Student Succeeds Act and Minnesota's development of our state plan. There is a meeting this week, Thursday, June 15, at 5:30 PM, at the Minnesota Department of Education in Roseville, in Conference Center B. But this is really an update for the public about the development of the state plan. It is nearing a final product that will be released later this summer, and then there will be a formal public comment to review. But if you want to get a sneak preview of how the state, and I think as most people know, I've been on one of the committees that has been providing input to MDE on this, is, you know, things like how schools and districts are going to be held accountable under this new federal law, what is going to be publicly reported, how it is going to be publicly reported, the type of support that the Department of Education will be providing to districts and to schools who are underperforming according to accountability standards. And so there's a lot in this that is deeply important for districts and schools across the state. And so if anybody is interested in that, I wanted to make sure that you are aware of the opportunity this Thursday at 5:30 PM, to get a little bit of a sneak peek. And then I certainly will share again, when the formal plan is released and is available for review and public comment, before it is submitted to the Department of Education.
I have a couple liaison assignment reports. The Spartan Foundation, the annual golf event is next Monday, the 19th, at Crystal Lake. If you have not yet registered, please do so. We'd love to see you out there. I will be taking a day off of work and spending it in the sun, and probably golfing terribly, but enjoying it all the same. There's also, last week, our, yes, it was last week, I attended the city's Human Rights Commission, which I liaise, I'm the school board liaison for that. We also have some students who represent the student point of view, who are part of that. They were very interested in the excitement surrounding our district for the last six weeks or so. And we talked about, you know, how the meeting went, how the community responded. They also had some interest in, and I spoke about the student protests that went on, and the concerns they raised, and how, and they're very interested in how we, as a district, would be following up on the issues raised by the students. They're not looking for a blow-by-blow or anything like that, but I told them we would, we would, you know, at the time, I didn't have the concerns in front of me, but would follow up with them on how that would go, as I imagine we will as a district, so.
Absolutely. And as we look towards the fall, we'll be presenting plans for next year with regard to NS and Classroom. We're also looking at groups that are really strong in engaging students. To that end, we've actually utilized our connection and experience with WMEP, and we've made some contacts out to Anthony Galloway, who specializes in students and student voice. We've also worked with Paula Forbes and Forbes Consulting, and they were the leaders of the Reimagine Minnesota work that we participated in, that our students had student voice participating in. And we're looking at, how do we, this fall, utilize the student voice that has been shared with us, engage our students further, encourage them to share their experiences, so that we can better understand and listen to our students and respond accordingly in a way that provides equity? And so we're looking forward to creating some of those plans to really, really launch that work pretty effectively in the fall.
Okay, so we will move on to future meeting dates, and we have July 17, Monday at 7:00 PM, regular board meeting and a closed session to follow. No?
I don't know if we need a closed session on the 17th at present, but we will add that if needed.
If needed, okay. And then the August meeting is still being, oh, no, we did decide on Tuesday, the 8th, the study session.
Yes, and then we'll just determine if it's realistic to hold it there, or if we'll have a break and transition in the middle or not. So we'll figure that out from a realistic perspective.
Okay. And then suggested future agenda items?
Yes, three policies that we had on, that we had in May, that we've obviously moved back. We didn't decide to go with them tonight. Credit for Learning, Interscholastic Activity and Community Education, three things we want to take care of, ideally before the start of school. But if we don't get through our third read, we would actually work to pass those the first meeting in September. And those are the ones that we really wanted to wrap up prior to, prior to next school year.
I mentioned this at the, well, before the meeting started, to Tim and to you, Steve, sitting on either side of me, but before, or when our new school, I'm so sorry, when our new student board members join us in the fall, I would, I would like to really think about how to construct that first meeting in a way that involves them, and hears about what they are hoping to get out of the experience of being a student board member, so that we can hopefully encourage really strong and meaningful participation from them throughout the year. So maybe just thinking about how we can build some time into that first board meeting in the fall, when our student representatives are known and are joining us, to build some meaningful connections, and hopefully get a strong start to the school year with them.
Yeah, that's a great point, Crystal. And, you know, just brainstorming real quick, I think that if individual board members are able to dedicate any time in a sort of a mentoring role, that could be really an outstanding, engaging way to make that a more powerful experience.
Good.
I agree. Hands-on and engagement in those to promote participation and retention, yes, so much.
Yeah.
So, next on our agenda is to move into closed session and assignment with Minnesota Statute 13D.03, if anyone, for the reasons of negotiations and superintendent evaluation, if anyone would like to make a move.
So I'm going to make a suggestion, that we take like a five-to-seven-minute transition break. We actually move to the district office, which will allow some closing up of work here, and will allow us to have our regular board location for a closed session.
I also have cookies for anybody walking out. If you want a cookie for the ride home, hang on just a second.
Cookies for the ride. So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Paulus, a second by Mr. Tensing, that we move into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The chair votes aye, and we will move into closed session after a short recess.